I was looking for a lot of doing the work.
All right, all right, seven oh six, uh, we're in the city council chambers, uh. There is a roll call, we can do a roll call again.
You betcha.
Um, go ahead, you go on.
George.
Here.
Aka, here, Buckle.
Here.
McElroy.
Here.
Ebert.
Here.
Hodgins.
Mayor Houston.
Present. Okay, so I believe the next four, yeah, all right, so everybody go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance. Right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, the Constitution, and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, any additions or allegiances to the agenda? Oh, well, I do, our presenter isn't good, so, uh, maybe, maybe, uh, this may be a little early. Probably not, um, okay, next, um, that's my only change, as far as I know. Oh, yeah, um, during, what, new business, that, before it was both, new business, um, before the community grant awards, let's put the, um, union poll up, um, vote. Do that and then do community grants.
Do, before the, the one, okay.
Yeah, before. Yeah.
Do you wanna maybe think about, I don't see anybody here for the community grant awards and working online, we work and have, people are invited to come tonight. I just didn't know if you wanted to move it, but nobody's here, so cancel that, usually, you know, if there's people here who move it ahead, so I have to say for the whole community, right?
Okay.
Then they don't get an award.
No, they won't, if, if you want, if, if council wants you, um, okay. All right, so, moving on to first public comment period, uh, I have a couple cards, so go ahead and read the rules. The public comment portion of the agenda is the opportunity for the council to listen, listen to the public, but not for dialogue. The public is allowed up to three minutes to present information relative, relevant to the city. The topic is, or issue brought up may be referred by the council to the city manager for inclusion on a subsequent council agenda. Council has a discretion to ask questions after comments are concluded. These note complaints should first be addressed to the appropriate city department and/or the city manager prior to directly addressing the council. Okay, we have two, so, uh, Andrew, do you wanna go ahead and come up?
I, 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 I just wanna say that I would, I would like to see for back here with, uh, with, uh, law is that used to be the, uh, we, we ground where they used to have the tower things and said, well, now, I, I generally, for all the years that I generally been, been here, this town, from the back, back corner of Napa, I have always watched the railroad track for when the train has come down the track from the highway coming to go to Willamette. Of all my years I've been here, and I, I, uh, had, had, uh, watch it, and I don't really like to see a little kid, a little kid or someone about school age going out there around that tra- around that track when that train's coming around the corner to go to Willam- go to Willamette with the empty cars or coming back from Willamette with the full cars going, going back towards, uh, uh, look, uh, Boston with the cars, 'cause, you know, it's, it's gonna have to be going pretty fast when it goes around the corner to go past the prison out there and, and this and that, and I just, I just don't wanna see a li- a little kid, a little kid get, get hurt or injured by, by a lady speed, speeding train being out there playing on, on the re- on the railroad tracks. You know, I feel that railroad tracks is not a, a play zone.
Right.
And, and I wanna see, wanna see that that possibly that either that fence, that what's there to be fixed where they can't get out there, or my other possessions is, or if there's gonna be like, if there's gonna be of a apartment or any type of living quarters put back there on that grounds, well, then, my kinda like suggestions would be is like the fence that's over here at the, uh, feast or, or something just like that should be put, uh, along there so that it's gonna be a major thing that they really can't get there because of, of the me- metal fence. I know, I know either way of the wood, wood, wood thing to be built there to keep them from it, or even the me- metal, metal fence like that's over there, either one of it, it's gonna cost, it, it, nothing, nothing's cheap. And, and I just wanna say, I'd just like to see, see the tracks be, be a, a safety zone where no one's out there, out there, uh, messing around the track, if, if there would be a, a, uh, a living, living quarters of that ground, ground areas, but then, another thing is, I also sometimes see for anyone like that goes to the high school, that's a high school age person, that goes to the, uh, the high school track or football field, they cross, they cross either way, cross through there to, and to go to the tra- track area or football field to play things, and that's where I feel that both, both sides, even the school, school line, line thing should also be, be fit, fixed so they can do it from their, their side. You know, it, it, no, I, as I would always wanna say to all of you guys, ever since I was a little kid, from after me being burned as a baby, and from my grandmother saving me fifty-six years ago from a burning house, you know, I, I just, I, I just know that it, it was a very hard thing, and it would've been a very hard thing for my grandmother to lose me as her first grandbaby. And it's been fifty-six years that I've been a miracle alive because of my grandmother, you know? And, you know, life, life is total hell of being the way, where I am, what I have to go through of hell. And I don't wanna see someone else have to go through what I have to. Now, it's very, it's very harsh.
Thank you.
It, it, it is really hard on me, and I just can't get over my grandmother for saving me fifty-six years. And if she would've been alive, alive today, I would've wanted to have taken her to, to the beach to buy her the miracle, miracle grandmother dinner for sa- saving me fifty-six years until happy end, first.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks.
And I wanna thank you, Andy, for coming in, because Andy came to my office, you know, Andy could come down here and talk to the public. And Andy's a witness to all those people who think they can't come down and say something to the city council, 'cause I know it took a lot for Andy to come down here tonight and share, because he watches those little kids, because Andy is our little refuge that's out and about, and he sees these kids running across those railroad tracks, and it scares him that something terrible's gonna happen to them, so thank you, Andy, for coming in and sharing that in person.
And, and, and another, kind of another thing too, I would wanna say that there's anything, if there's anything and anything for, uh, city ordinance that, uh, would need to be done, if you need, if you need, uh, tall grass, tall grass cut or tree, tree, fallen tree, fallen tree cut, I have a four sixty-one steel chainsaw, and if the tree is fallen, I can, I can cut it, split it, and then you can take it, and, and, uh.
We can share that with our, uh, code report person, she's, she's dealing with some of those, so.
You know, I, I just wanna say, I have a, I have a four sixty-one steel, I paid for the motor part, and then what I paid for the bar and chain, so it's about eighteen hundred total with my chainsaw, and so, you know, I just wanna say to, to, to you guys that is there anything of, any, any major hope thing that you need, uh, tall grass for fire, firehouses, uh, tall grass being of the firehouses, or if you have, again, if you have, uh, a tree or something that needs to be cut, you can always either let Lucy or you can let, uh, the, the Roxy, you know, know at the storage units, and they both can let me know about, about any, any, uh, yard, yard of tall grass or wood, wood, I will cut it, split it, and get it ready for the wood to be taken away.
Okay, thank you, thanks for coming in.
And Joe gets to put it on film, so there you go, it'll be on YouTube.
Would it be pertinent if I just do the second pub- public comment period so you guys can get through the day?
Want to.
I'll, I'll do that.
Okay, all right, next, um, we have public hearing, so. So, the first one is to receive state revenues. And I believe that's. Sorry, uh, so this is, yeah, public, public hearing, this is the state revenue, sure, all right, so, gotta script to read, but it's in this deck. State requires that the council hold public hearings for a city, I'll read that. Okay. I'll make sure, I'll read mine, too. Um, public hearings for a city to receive state revenue sharing, this is money that each city receives from the state with no strings attached except for holding a public hearing. Purpose is to give the public a chance to express how they think the money should be spent, or even for people to say they do not want a city to accept it. It's my recommendation that the city of Sheridan accepted state revenue share, it is already included in the proposed budget. So. It is June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at seven eighteen P M, and I'm opening a public hearing regarding the city of Sheridan accepting this portion of the state revenue sharing. Uh, are there any members of the council that have a bias or conflict of interest? All right, are there any objections to the jurisdiction to hear this matter? Uh, are there any objections to the notice that was sent out for state revenue share, notice was in the news registry and posted on the city's website? All right, are there any questions for staff at this time regarding this matter? Okay, right, this time, if there are any members of the public here to speak in favor, please state your name, city residence, and your statement. Okay, uh, if there are any people who wish to speak in opposition, now is the time, just state your name, city residence, and statement. All right, lastly, if you wish to speak and are neither in support or opposition but wish to speak regarding state revenue sharing, please do so now, state your name, state residence, and make your statement. All right, no further comments, public hearing in the matter of the city of Sheridan accepting the state revenue share is now closed, it is seven twenty P M. Councillors, you will, you will vote on this by resolution later in the meeting. Okay, all right, that's the first one, here's the second one, um, it is June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at seven twenty P M, and I'm opening a public hearing regarding the city of Sheridan's budget fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Are there any council, members of the council that have a bias or conflict of interest? Do we say yes or, okay, last three, okay, are there any objections?
For the record.
For the record, Liz, Roxy, and me. Yep, are there any objections to the jurisdiction to hear this matter? Are there any objections to the notice that was sent out for the city of Sheridan's budget fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, notice was in the news registry and posted on the city's website? Are there any questions for staff at this time regarding this matter? All right, this time, if there are any members of the public to speak in favor of anything included in the proposed city's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, please state your name, city residence, and your statement. All right, if there are any people who wish to speak in opposition of anything included in the proposed city's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, now is time to speak, please state your names, state your residence, and statement. All right, lastly, if you wish to speak and are neither in support or opposition but wish, wish to speak regarding the city's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, please do so now, state your name, state residence, and make your statement. All right, no further comments, the public hearing in the matter of the city of Sheridan's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five is now closed, it is seven twenty-two P M. Councillors, you will vote by resolution later in the meeting. All right, we have no presentations, so I'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Jordan.
Yeah.
I just wanted to note that on the voucher directly for the bulletin board expense, there is no bulletin board expense in this particular package, so.
Okay, so I'm in the agenda there.
I apologize, I forgot about that.
We can cross.
H on.
H off, okay, so, just G, okay. Okay. Listen.
I have a question about the special session minutes. Do I need to wait for after our vote, or?
No.
Okay, um.
Yes, now, which page?
On page four of two hundred and four, um, number four, the task force update, so, um, since there won't be a town hall, would.
Is this a question about the minutes, or is this a discussion item?
This is a question about the minutes, something in the minutes.
Well, if, if, is it? So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume, yeah, it's like.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have discussion now, I get it, okay, I'll ask later.
Anything else? What's the other question?
I make a motion in the council, approve city council meeting minutes for May sixth, two thousand twenty-four, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, and June third, two thousand twenty-four, and the budget committee minutes for May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, as presented.
Second. All right, first and second, um, a discussion.
Now we can discuss?
Yeah.
Okay, so I do have a question, um, I'm just curious with the May sixth special session minutes on page, what did I say, four? Yeah, so the task for, under number four, task force update, um, it says that, uh, we paid Nick, Nick, D, um, for an additional payment to hold in a town hall, but there won't, my understanding is.
This is just the discussion list on the minutes, do these minutes reflect what was discussed during the meeting or not? Substantive discussion can happen during mayor council comments.
Okay, all right.
Whether or not that will happen, this did happen at that meeting, this has happened.
Okay, just a minute, okay, okay, all right, sorry, that's why I keep.
No.
Right, so. So, okay, so, first and second on the minutes, any other discussion? All right, I'll go ahead and vote, all in favor? All right, let's be honest, all right, um, Director, do you have any questions on that one?
I make a motion, we approve the director directory for employees paid, May twenty, two thousand twenty-four, two, two thousand twenty-four, as presented.
Second, all right, first and second, any discussion? Oh, Jim.
Uh, usually I have a question, so, I had numerous questions as I went through this. With the talking with Heidi and Stacy about, uh, how the money was spent, all of my questions were answered satisfactorily. Although there's a lot of money being spent here, it's not being spent for items that, uh, we don't need. There is, uh, on page forty-three of, uh, two hundred and four, the bank card, uh, expenditure. There is no breakdown in the packet right now for, uh, why we spent, uh, twenty-four thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and sixty cents. But I've been assured that in the next packet, there will be a breakdown to that, because it is a very large number to use on our bank card, there's been some problems with the US Bank, uh, party care in an eighty-four way, so, these looks absolutely great, really answers to the question.
Oh, listen.
On page twenty-six, maintenance, I'm surprised Jim didn't get it. On page twenty-six of two hundred and four, yeah. No, it's just about that.
All right, um, any other? All right, I'll go ahead and call for a vote then, uh, all in favor? All right, all to be honest. Okay, moving on.
Mayor, I just made, just a point of order for efficiencies taken in the future, we could use one motion to approve the consent agenda, we don't have to break it out as two separate motions.
Might make that lighter next time before you. Okay, um, all right, so sheriff's report. Questions about that?
How about an?
A lot of stuff.
How about an observation?
Go ahead, listen.
I just noticed most, um, crimes are, are decreasing, but the drug law, law crimes are increasing.
So I wonder if that's because, uh, one ten laws have been tweaked, so they can actually do something now? I don't know, is there a question for deputies, uh, Kim?
Yeah, there's always a question, was it, uh, better enforcement, or was it just, uh, you know, things happen that cause that, but nonetheless, it's a good thing to have that uh, pop up if you caught, remember, have it happening and not, uh, something happens about it. And I also looked through the, uh, amazingly complicated, uh, uh, amount of items from the, uh, sheriff, and if you worked through all this, that about everything you can think of, they, they have been there and they've been working on it, so I, I've read several times, and it's very frustrating when, uh, people say, oh, the cops aren't gonna do anything anyway, based on what we're seeing, they're doing a lot of things. And they do follow up, and they do, uh, take care of these, and there's, uh, surprising to me, in Sharon, you don't think of it, there's, uh, several sexual assaults in here, that's, uh, disappointing, but, uh, they're, they're on the game, and they're working to take care of things.
So I got, you can call things in and you see it, yeah, when in doubt, report, even if you're not sure if it's legal or not, it doesn't, doesn't hurt, sure, investigate it. Any other questions on that report, or comments, or? Okay. Uh, public works, report, um, Gary is here. Have you got any questions for, about the report or questions for Gary?
He's a year older now.
Is there a report?
I know.
I, uh, I'm trying to drop the ball, I need to apologize.
He didn't drop the ball, we let him off the hook, 'cause there's this thing called Sharon Days happening.
Yeah, I know, you're very busy.
Home counties.
Home counties and, and, uh, clean up, and try to keep up with everything else, I just, ran out of time. So I do have a few things, a few notes I jotted down, first of all, I did wanna apologize for my report not being in, but, uh, second of all, we had a very successful, uh, seat, city cleanup as far as from public works standard, or public works. Uh, everybody worked really hard on this, making sure that we had cleaned up to the best of our abilities, and then we had, uh, several, I think, six guys, uh, from the crew who, uh, came in on Saturday and worked, uh, in particular Jeff worked all day, um, and then the council, of course, also helped out, um.
They worked very hard.
Yes, um, the city cleanup, did I already say that one, the city cleanup was a success as well, too, uh, sounded like it was one of the busiest ones we've had. Uh, I know Kenny told me that they were all dragging after, just because of how busy it was, um, and I know how hard the council's worked at that, 'cause I talked to Kenny, and he was just dragging about everybody that was there, so thank you guys very much, 'cause that'd be, that was a great joint effort with the public works crew and the council. He, he specifically said Lucy.
Yeah, Lucy.
Um, we also have the sidewalk project, the sidewalk, uh, for, for, uh, third street between, uh, Jefferson and Chapman, that's been poured. Um, and then they also completed a little corner spot right there at, uh, Jefferson and Fourth, uh, connecting to the ADA ramp where the, uh, guide wire is in the middle of the, in the middle of the area, and we're still working to get that alleviated. Um, the city, uh, street striping project, that should be just about completed if it's not wrapped up, um, they basically re-strided the whole town, um, and I think it looks very nice, it really did freshen things up around here, so that's the stripes on the road, not necessarily the curb. They painted curves all over, I don't know if there's a specific one, but they, they were, they had a little, it looked, uh, it looked like a little homemade deal that, yeah, the guy was just riding around on it, and it had a spot that he could have whatever color paint he wanted, and it had several different nozzles, so he could just drive along and just hit it as he went, it was the same one that they used for the striping on the center of the streets.
Okay, I do have a question about that paint, um, as far as, as long as I've lived here, it seems like it's painted purely. Um, and I'm wondering with, you know, what the cost is for the paint that lasts longer, if it has those out, or it's actually less expensive just to do it every year?
The whole, so the whole striping project, to do everything it did, when they put the, um, the pre-markdown that they have to use the, um, porch for, the whole project was thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollars, I believe.
And that's with the, the crosswalks?
That's everything, yep.
Are those replaced every year, or is that just every?
Crosswalk ones are, uh, the crosswalks and the train track ones are, that's a year by year base, but they're pretty much, they're not done every year, they're done every other year.
Okay.
And you get those on your reports for the, for, you know, railroad, and a lot, a lot of times, we'll make sure you get those freshened up.
But like the curb paint or, that, that's, that's curb paint, I guess, is the one I think.
The curb paint, a lot of that has been still hard to, difficult to get ever since COVID, there's, there's some of it, I remember that there, there were some of the, like, the yellow and the red that I tried to get, 'cause you wanna get the one that's specific to curb to stay for longer, um, some of that was at one point twelve to eighteen months back order, but that was, you know, two, three years ago, so I don't, I, I imagine supplies are getting caught up, but I haven't had to deal with that.
What I think he's asking is how long does the paint last, 'cause he's wondering if it could wait like a couple of years.
It's typically, from what I've seen, it's three to five, depending on how many times it gets hit, or, or what happens, but I believe it's a three to five year.
Okay, 'cause as far as, yeah, yeah, 'cause as long as I remember, the curbs get painted every year, right before Sharon Days, or Home County, sorry. Uh, and I'm wondering if we're still doing that yearly, or if there's like, you know.
I don't remember doing that last year, I know that there's a lot of cleaning that gets done, and we have a, a pressure washer that had, uh, that you can also, it has heat as along with it. So a lot of times you can just run a pressure washer over it, and it looks like it's brand new, um, they said, I've only, this is, I'm only going basically off your, and have to experience, so I, that, I, I could ask somebody and get a better answer, but that's, that's what I know is.
This is what I was, I was thinking, if they would, I mean, it's like, we're, we're having to paint every year, we might wanna look at better paint, but maybe that's three times as much or something, but.
Yeah, I don't, from the looks, but I don't think it's done every year.
Okay, uh, Jim?
Yeah, uh, first of all, I'd say the town looked great because of that, I think public works did a fantastic job, and it represented the town very well, because I know. I think public works did a fantastic job and represented the town very well because I know we have a lot of visitors. Because the number of people that were at home town days, Sharon doesn't have that many people, so we have some visitors to see what's going on. The one, uh, critique that I have is the parking space right next to the crosswalk going to the IGA. We had agreed to shrink that down to a compact only parking space, but no, it's been painted back to its normal size.
That, that, that's, that's wrong me, that, that got lost in translation between me and Kenny and the striping crew, so that's.
But if that's what made it went wrong, I think you did a great job, but it's still like, like you gotta take care of, try and make that crosswalk.
Um, and by the way, I saw a big four-wheel drive parked there and I was driving slow, but I couldn't even see the people because it was a big four-wheel drive and it blocked them all the way until they got out to the street.
Uh, look, Gary, can you share about that?
Yeah, June twentieth.
So June twentieth, uh, part of that, that issue is primarily going to be alleviated because we will be opening bids for the crosswalk project, which is, uh, right at, uh, in front of the IGA right there, there'll be a bull bout, uh, and new crosswalk. And then also at, um, Morgan Street, they'll, we're fixing the crosswalk there and then in front of, that's the Hyder.
Tigros.
Tigros, yeah, on the, on the Hyder side, there'll be, uh, we're fixing this problem, I guess what I'm trying to say.
But if you're curious, I think we have talked about bull bouts before, but a good example is going, um, on Main toward Walmart. I have a couple of bull bouts there, um, and Third Street is just in, in McMillville, sorry, Third Street, McMillville is just bull bouts everywhere. But, um, that's, that's what you'll have there. So instead of standing on the sidewalk here behind the car, it'll be a bull bout, so you'll be kind of, you kind of have like a head start.
It, it puts it, so you're in vision and then it also, uh, gives kind of an optical illusion of the room shrinking. So then it also helps to slow traffic down, which will then also keep our community more safe.
And part of that project, is that going to be a continental crosswalk, that we're gonna keep that, the two stripes there for now?
At, at, um, at Harney right there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, we'll, we'll keep the two stripes there until it's completed and then, yeah, so then we'll have those two and one at Morgan. And then the Hyder building, we'll have something in front of it for bikes and it's, it's, it's gonna be a great project. We should have, I think we're opening the bids, uh, shoot, I think the one opening is, it's either one and two on Thursday or?
It's okay, they're happening.
They are happening Thursday afternoon.
The other bid that's being opened that he's referring to is for the rail cart bridge for the south side. So Gary, are we gonna take out the parking place next to this crosswalk and extend it towards the south?
Yeah, I can send you guys the plans, yes.
Cool. I like that.
Yep, no problem. Um, let's see, we had to make a couple repairs to the irrigation systems, one at the library and, uh, one at the city park, the city park had a wiring issue and, um, the library had to replace the irrigation controller. Um, we got a good deal on it, low side of one clearance, we got a $100 irrigation controller for twenty nineteen dollars. I bought four of them. In case something happens here or somewhere else, um, we got them saved. Um, we've spent quite a bit of time, uh, I know, uh, I along with our engineers with the ODOT project for, um, uh, on, uh, Main for all the different crosswalks, crosswalks we've been, uh, gathering. Uh, depths, valves and where meter boxes are, and, um, so Joe's been a big help on that as well. That's taken us quite a bit of time and such. Um, we also today I got the, uh, consumer confidence report, which is basically your, uh, your drinking water report for the twenty twenty-three. Uh, posted online today and then the link is going to be attached to the utility bill so they can have a link so the community can get online and see, uh, what the results of that were. And then there's also a blurb about it in the newsletter, which also shows the link so anybody can get on and take a look at it. And then I'll have that, uh, certified and sent to the Oregon Health Authority on Thursday afternoon. That was my real quick notes, once again, I'm sorry, I'll try not to let this happen.
Any other questions I can answer?
No, but thank you for saying at the city park and Sharon and then the hometown day, it's beautiful.
That's what I kept calling it all day.
Yeah, it, it still looks nice, it's very nice.
Thank you.
Over those two other sections on from the crosswalk.
Uh, Morgan, Morgan and, um, and Harney Street. And then the right here off.
All right, any other questions for Gary? Okay, all right, thank you, thank you guys. All right, next, uh, library director report, uh, Lee White's here.
Good evening, does anybody have any questions on what the business report or anything?
Jim, I don't have any questions, but I want to say that, uh, we've talked often about the building, the libraries and it's, it's a little help. I think this is fantastic, the numbers you show here for, uh, the amount of time you were open is fantastic. I see the meeting room uses have, uh, gone up nicely and see nine hundred, nine hundred and sixteen checkouts. That's not renewal, that's just checkout, that's impressive. And then I was actually, uh, hometown days portion in the park, which was very well attended by a bunch of rich short people. And, uh, I just, I got the impression that all of them had a very good time, I think that's my view as well.
Thank you, yeah, we had, they seemed to have fun with our little games and we got quite a few signed up for summer reading. I believe at this point we're close to fifty, if not over fifty, signed up for summer reading. And so, yeah, we're really excited about that.
I have a question about, uh, um, your comparison report, the last attendance, attendance for what?
For the programs.
Oh, okay, okay.
For the programs.
So I, looking at this, so I guess for some reason this is, like twenty, so twenty twenty-four, is it at January?
So all those were from May.
Oh, that's right, okay, that's right, okay, that's right, I forgot about that one.
And Gwen, I had a question for my counselor, they wanted to know more about what overdrive was.
So overdrive is the electronic, um, resources, so it's the, uh, eBooks, uh, e-magazines, audiobooks. That's our overdrive system.
And if you have a library or you have access to that, that's all right?
Correct, yeah, I, you. A canopy is not in that, yeah, it's, uh, not recorded in that number. I won't get the canopy number till like July from CCRF, that all comes through them and they do the figures of that.
Anyway, you can visit overdrive.com to see more about what all those resources are that libraries have really pushed themselves electronically to pay out years.
Yeah, and you're allowed six checkouts at a time with overdrive and six holes at a time.
That's like killing.
Yeah.
Way to keep up.
Keep up.
Get the job done.
We see this.
Let, let's go.
I just want to add, um, Friday night with the kids parade, there were a lot of kids at your booth to get your prizes and that was really cute.
Yeah, they seem to enjoy it, we enjoyed seeing all of them and everything.
You did a good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Uh, next, we, uh, code enforcement.
Jim? I, uh, saw Angela today and I congratulated her on this, this report is extremely inclusive. I think you definitely worked hard to find a question about what's going on, which is great. I don't think we've had one this in-depth before and you can tell exactly what's going on. Throughout the program, you can see that, uh, despite what you may have seen from else, public city doing this to try and make money, there have been no fees collected, zero, so we're not trying to finance the city on library fines or excuse me, quote unquote, fines. But, uh, yeah, I'm just impressed with, uh, the numbers that you've done, how many teams were closed, how people are really responding. To her, I think it's a credit to her that she's able to work with people, uh, some people aren't very friendly, especially when she's only got to clean a place up. She's done a great job.
It sounds like, um, I, I didn't ask this person, they just kind of told me, uh, they're, uh, they own several round of rentals in town. They appreciate people being able to work for Angela. It's technically the property owners' property they're running at, you know, but it sounds like she also works great with property owners too. All right, any questions about this? Okay, all right, next we have the city reporter.
Actually, can I say one thing?
What?
We've only had one person out of all the toes that we've been doing, we've only had one person come to get their vehicle.
So what do we do with the rest of them?
Uh, the tow truck company processes all the paperwork, it can be terrible, the legality is, but eventually I can, we stay with them.
Oh, they get optioned.
Wow, our comment, you know?
I don't know, I'm not my name, it's pretty true.
Okay, um, you go on, you have?
Well, dang it, I thought I did a pretty decent job on my election thing until I realized we were gonna go ahead and administer the oath of office in January of twenty-four instead of five, so Jim, you know, you've done that typo. So that's a correction I have on there, but again, for those of you who, um, your terms are coming to the end in December, please consider writing again, um, if you're not, please tell people that they're interested in City Hospital to come talk to us.
People can sign up right now.
When's the, uh, what's the cutoff for that?
I know that's my timeline there, hold on here. August thirty-fourth, it, it's late August.
August twenty-third, right, yeah?
Yes, that would be it.
Is it the same deadline to submit your, um?
For the pamphlet?
Yeah.
The pamphlet, it's, it's the later deadline on there, um, they're the September fifth and you take that actually into, yeah, directly into Danville County, that bypasses us altogether.
They like it if you email it to them, give it that.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, they like it if it's word documents and they can just copy paste it.
Oh, probably, and they, um, they probably, they like money probably more, so they probably want to make sure that they collect payment at the same time. And because I, I do believe it's fifty dollars still.
And when they request a picture, they prefer you to email it to them, or just give it a photo because then they have to process it. It'll be emailed to them.
Yeah, they got the, yeah, and then you can choose what picture you want.
Yeah.
So, you know, all the due dates are on page one forty-four.
Um, on the calendar, I was going to, um, suggest since we won't meet the first Monday, um, if we could do a work session July ninth. Um, if not, that's fine, I just, I was gonna suggest that, uh, if we don't want, if we only want to meet once in July, that's fine. We could meet, we could meet July twenty-ninth because that's, that's five, it's like five Mondays.
But then we'd have one the next week.
I don't find any July ninth for a work session.
I'd like to have, um, said court come and talk about the, that's real, you know, and I, contract that you know they're ready about. We'll be able to take a look at it and have said court come and talk to us.
Aren't you doing that town hall on July eleventh as well?
Just a planning session.
Yeah, that's just, that's just.
So I'll have, Kayla and I'll have three ninety, no, I'll have three ninety.
Yeah, so Tuesday, if that's fine with everybody, then we can do a, a work session.
Okay.
And probably have, well, what time? Seven? Regular time? Try not to make it more.
Yeah, on the night.
July seventh, if that, oh, sorry, ninth, July ninth, sorry. At seven, you got the numbers mixed up. Yeah, as, as long as that works for you. Okay. So, okay. Okay. Um, any questions for you on?
Well, I just wanted to double check that the first didn't work for people, July first.
Oh, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure, Chloe.
Yeah, I'd rather do the nights just because I'm gonna, I didn't ask that court if the first would work, but I mean, I think a lot of people have that whole week, you know, for the fourth, um, that we can do something.
Most normal people have make a run for it, the rest of us stay home.
Okay, um, all right, any other questions on anything for you on? Okay, right. City letter reporting, Jim? On page one forty-seven, uh, fourth paragraph down, BCA dash twenty-four dash zero zero five, uh.
BCA?
Or BCA, BCA, twenty-four, oh, oh, five, yeah, what's an SFP, Sharon, fire district?
Single family dwelling.
I'd have Jim going. What are they thinking of now?
That makes sense, uh, yep, yep. They had a second comment, uh, uh, second paragraph from the bottom, sub twenty-four dash zero zero one. Uh, this appears to be excellent news that they already have their necessary wetland permits. It looks like maybe something might finally happen there after hearing for two years that there's gonna be some sort of subdivision there.
Yep, yep, I was actually, um, there, Liam was talking about this project the other day and it's, it's promising, it's not gonna happen overnight. It'll take some time, but at least I think the biggest hurdle, I might be wrong because I'm not, I don't know about city plan, but I think the biggest hurdle was basically getting approval from the art and court engineers to basically build there and they have that now. So I don't know what else. But as, as Big is talking to the.
I can see you're right, the largest, well, it was good to see that Barbara Roberts first. Application, we know it's gonna be a project, it's also open. Looking on it. These are starting to chug back a lot in, I mean, in building and you'll see soon Liam and I are working on trying to figure out how to get some reports or some money into the city to do the reports that are gonna be required soon because a lot of the land in the city is gonna be pretty much developed, especially for housing. So we're gonna work on trying to get some funding to do those required reports.
Right, Jim? I, I do attend the Barbara Roberts, uh, central queue that this school has, I'll say one. And I'd just like to let everybody have, people should already know that the reason they started to build the, your, make the Barbara Roberts Central Center was they had that nice big building there, so they thought, hey, that's a great thing, um, to save a million dollars, they're gonna tear it down. And, uh, they're gonna, the rock is supposed to be donated, if they can get it torn down fairly quickly, they'll have time to get the rock in there and the rock will be able to settle, which will assist their building process of getting moving along. So when you see the building coming down, it's okay, we got, we got processes figured out, they are gonna be recycling the, uh, metal that comes out of there and interning that company is also gonna be able to provide some sort of funding or donation to assist building the new building.
Uh, just a clarification on that, Jim, I believe the school board has to approve demolition, not take. So if they approve it, but that sounds like that's what the proposal.
Yeah, I think if they don't approve it, they're not gonna get our department's technical education center.
I just wanted to add that, uh, okay. So any other questions on the planner report? Okay, all right, Tyler, what do you have?
Any questions on my report?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where is it? Where is it?
Uh, well, as you can tell by Liam's report, he is doing a lot and he is keeping me very busy. Um, we didn't mention it during his report, but, um, Uh, well, as you can tell by Liam's report, he is doing a lot, and he is keeping me very busy, um, we didn't mention it during his report, but, um, uh, the city received a grant to do kind of a, I don't know if, if this is Liam's phrase, but a surgical code amendment, um, so we are updating some pieces of our development code, and Liam sent me those seventy pages, and we spoke for a while last week about those, and then he got a updated copy out that he is planning to have a, uh, work session with the planning commission on that, uh, in July, July?
Yes, the second.
Um, and he is doing a really excellent job, I'm excited for that project to perform, there's also been lots of development applications, um, and Liam is just working on grants, trying to get, get grants, he, uh, prepared an application for a TGM grant that he and I would work together, um, so Liam's been keeping me busy, but in a good way, um, and then aside from development, a lot of things related matters. Earlier today, yes, Tim.
Uh, with Laura's moving out, are we gonna be replacing for her, or?
Laura is not moving on.
Oh, changed your mind?
Uh, negotiations did not result in any contracts.
Wow.
Yeah, so also have economic development, we would, we would have anyways, but this will be different. Okay, well, any other questions for?
Ian, just getting this packet ready, what's there?
Okay. Um, alright, so now we have, um, a bunch of resolutions. So, first one is resolution twenty-two four dash M. Should I read these titles, or we've got them?
You can, you don't need to read the title, if, and if at any point the mayor does read the title, then for efficiency's sake, whoever makes the motion to approve the resolution, can just use the resolution number.
Or say so. He just, just destroy part of it.
Okay, good, 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 good.
Okay. Um, so first one, any questions about it?
Twenty-two four M?
Yep.
Twenty-two four dash M, alright, Jim, uh, I move to approve resolution twenty-two four M as presented.
I second it.
Great. First and second, any discussion?
Kind of forms of looking at.
That's why I'm saying.
This resolution has nothing to do with an amount of money, this resolution is saying we need X, Y, Z criteria so that we can accept them.
We're eligible.
I just kinda wondered what the boundaries on those funds were.
Okay, moving ahead on.
Okay.
No, we didn't vote, any other, any other discussion items?
Alright, let's vote, um, all in favor? Alright, that's unanimous. Okay, resolution twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four dash N.
I'd make a motion, uh, to approve resolution twenty-four dash N, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five as presented.
First, I second.
Any discussion on that?
Does that propose estimate of funds on that, it's a, we do, we have an odd one, okay, so.
Uh, well, I don't have the answer, but this would be kind of ask.
Heidi Williams, the proposed amount.
Uh, well, it's not categories simply.
More than and less than.
So it would be all of.
Just roughly.
I know, um.
Between one and ten thousand dollars.
There you go.
No.
It's between one dollar and.
State revenue sharing, a hundred fifteen thousand.
Have a two.
Have two hundred fifteen.
It actually is kind of like a crystal ball thing. We have to, again, realize, you know, it goes through the whole process of the state, and then, so this is just an estimate. Yes. That we could possibly.
Okay, so, first, second.
You're lucky.
Any more discussion on that, okay? Um. Yeah, uh, we both, no, I thought you were saying something, um, alright, all in favor? Alright, that's unanimous, alright, so, resolution, next one, twenty-two four dash O, resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning July one twenty-four, appropriations, taxes, categorizing taxes. Listen.
I move for the city to share into acceptable resolution number twenty-nine four dash zero, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, city to share a budget in the amount of nine, or someone just read that part, please, and make a map, appropriations, wait, how do you say that word? Appropriations, okay, as presented in the resolution by opposing and categorizing the permanent tax rate of two point three one three zero seven per thousand of assessed value.
So the number has to be written to the record.
Oh.
This is like the most serious motion in all motions.
Okay, but I can't read.
So it's nineteen million, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars in here.
It's dash O, whatever, zero O.
Don't look at that.
I, I'm not looking at you at all, so is that, is that acceptable?
Yes, I think so.
First, okay.
Everybody's agreeing, everybody knows that they're voting on.
I think so, okay, that's first. First, second.
I second.
Okay, alright, first and second, any discussion, Jim?
Uh, I think we need to amend that, uh, to, uh, include what's based on the note from, uh, the city manager, that we could not include a nest of the thirty thousand dollars for replacement of the valves in the water treatment plant that are very dated, instead of purchasing a steep incline mower, we would like the justice to approve the cost for the water pipe valves to bore or not be purchased. The water fund will need to have money moved for both vehicle slash equipment line and the maintenance line to pay for the thirty thousand dollar cost of the valves and the sewer fund. The money will need to be moved from the vehicle slash equipment to improvements, the reason that we need more money for fencing around the lagoons.
I'm gonna incorporate that.
Uh, I could take, I could make a motion on that.
So it is already updated in resolution O, I reflect a bit, it's just really good that you call it out, so, if you adopt this, then you've done what we've asked.
So Elizabeth's motion is still fine, then we don't have to amend anything, okay. Okay. Um, we have a first and a second on that. Um, I believe.
Uh. Liz can't make the motion.
Oh, that's right.
Well, no, she can make it.
And I second it. I, well, that's a good city attorney. We can make it really clean and just.
I, I think Kayla's probably right, I think it's, it's the voting that was such the conflict.
Okay, not the motion making.
So they're, so they're fine, do that, okay, Jim?
I have a question, it's very simple, why can't Liz vote, she receives, um, Liz, you go ahead, it's my fault, please.
I work for the bulletin, and we have a conflict of bulletin, so I, it's a conflict.
Good, thank you.
And I ran the story, you know, because the city had charities and received money.
And I, very in a doubt, uh, writing for the bulletin, so I'm gonna have to explain, I have to.
Who were the house members? Liz is impossible.
Who's voting?
And Lucy.
Are you sure that you cannot vote?
It's a house.
Because.
Oh, it's a house member, oh, yeah.
Okay, well, alright, then, um, any other discussion on this before we vote? Be very small vote.
No, yes. Uh, I don't know if, I, I don't think that I like that we are adding a position at the library, and I think that we should at this time not add a position that also requires us to add, um, benefits and things, and we're making a commitment to hire this person to keep them employed uh, in the city for, presumably we would like to keep this person on it full time, all, all the time for the foreseeable future. And I don't think that we have the money, um, overall, that we need to increase the staff of the library at this time, uh, especially considering that we are adding forty thousand dollars worth of furniture this year. And so I would propose that we do not add that position in the budget, and that we instead use that money to, excuse me, to create, like, in a, um, either to use it in some other needed place, or to have it used as an emergency fund for public works, because we don't have, if I understand correctly, uh, we do not have a single dollar put away for a geyser of a water, that that's gonna come out somewhere. And that we need our public works to have reserves to be able to take care of the city, especially if we have uh, some sort of massive disaster, and we right now have zero dollars, and I think it's irresponsible for us to commit to a position with benefits for a new employee at this time. And I understand that the city wants to have two employees there for safety reasons, however, I don't think that having two employees there will make a big difference if something's gonna happen with one employee, there's gonna have two employees there. Um, and I think that's, uh, you know, I would like for there to be, you know, a police officer outside of there, that'd be great, but we can't afford that as a city, and we can't afford it as a community, and I don't think that we should, um, it would be nice to have that, but I can't have that, I can't have a police officer or security guard out in front of my house, I can't afford, and if we can't afford it, then we can't. And I'm sorry to those women that are working there, not that, I'm sorry, the employees that are working there now, however, we're, we have a commitment to the people of the city to be, be ready for these sorts of things, that's all.
Great, Jim, uh, I don't disagree with you, Ian, I think, uh, problem is, you can't tell us right now, Heidi, how much money we would save by not, um, hiring that employee, is that correct?
Uh, no, I, not at this very moment, no, I would have to go disappear in the back end to a whole bunch of number crunching.
And then the second half of that, um, I understand what you're proposing, I don't think we could cross funds like that to, uh, take something from the general fund and put it into the, uh, water fund or, uh, street fund or sewer fund, I think we probably can't.
General fund money, property tax money can be used for any, but it's the other way around, I mean.
But the general fund is essentially all grease, okay?
Yeah, and the water fund does have a hundred and fifty-six thousand, eighty-five dollars in contingencies in case there is some sort of a thing, so there is money for that emergency.
Lucy.
Jim, are you done?
Well, I have a question already, but what you just said, Heidi, I'm looking at regulation twenty-two four O, it says the contingency fund for the water fund is nine three thousand, five hundred and eighty-five, and you just said a hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Sure, so the contingency would be unappropriated, would be together, but not on this, unappropriated shows up under grand total all fund, under total reserves.
Okay, you understand the better than I do, that's fine.
Alright, Lucy, go ahead.
So, I also understand.
Alright, Lucy, hold on one second. You, you guys get the correct, alright, Lucy.
I understand where Ian's coming from, because of that forty thousand for the equipment also, and then Heidi mentioned at our budget committee, you know, you better, I mean, I'm ad libbing here, you know, you better be wearing our skinny pants next year on, on the budget, so, but I don't like to work irresponsible to the city, I think that the city needs to just be cautious. And, um, irresponsible just kind of sounds like slap, I don't like it personally, cautious, I think we need to be cautious, I think if we put it into a contingency account, it would be there to be able to help any resource that something could happen, and then keep that on the back burner too. And maybe, maybe, because Washington Street isn't that far from the library, maybe when guys are booming back and forth to the old public works, they could stop by once in a while and just check in there, if, you know, every two hours or every three hours, and is everything okay, or something like that.
A couple of notes, one, I will have to check with our insurance to make sure that we can only have one person at the library, I don't know about that, um, as far, they, they set the standard for a lot of the security stuff, our insurance does, the other thing is, um, we would have to pay them to go in there out of the general fund. So the second they start covering at the library or checking in at the library, it becomes part of their job, and we'd have to amend their job description, and we would have a bunch of insurance, I don't wanna be an obstacle to this, but I, and major.
Hasn't the city had volunteers before the library?
We do have volunteers at the library, yeah, so we also can't count on them to be there consistently.
No, but that would be at least something more than just one person all the time on the room.
I think that the library director and I both would rather not have the furniture than not have a person. Yep.
Jim. Um, if I remember correctly, you mentioned that there, there's a person at the library that's gonna be doing a maternity leave sometime.
They are currently not.
Okay, so, uh, how is that being handled? Cause we only have three employees, now we're down to two.
Yeah, we do, we hired a, a position for a temporary.
I was gonna ask you.
We break through September, and all this, the podcast, we have.
And is, uh, could Marcy be the fill-in for the, uh, other half of the secondary time?
She has been, but the second we take Marcy from here, we have a struggle with keeping it open for lunchtime, which we've been able to do because we can have Marcy back. So we're able to do that on, uh, every day but Fridays, so, yeah, you can't have it all, and then we end up paying Marcy out of the general fund when she just goes to the library.
Okay, I don't know who was first, Ian, or, Ian, you wanna go ahead?
Um, first of all, I'll correct that thought, thank, so, uh, yes, you, it, I think we should be cautious, I think maybe my drug structure is talking.
Okay.
Irresponsibility, so, uh, sure, we should be cautious, and I think in the light of being cautious, I think it's odd for us to say that these two people, employees of ours, would be somehow safer if we have two of them, yet these people don't have any sort of requirement for security training. I mean, I don't know, are we really going to say that, I mean, we're, I think we may be opening ourselves up to some sort of liability if the, if they, uh, one of our employees is assaulted or something, and they say, well, they said we would be safe, we had two employees.
Good point.
Uh, Liz, I think was first.
Yeah, um, I understand the safety issue, and I totally agree with it, and I also think it's not just about safety, that's, the library is a fairly large building, not huge, but if you only have one person there, and they have to go to the bathroom, or they have to do something, who's gonna cover the main desk, each of the circulation desks, and help patrons that are there, so I think two is, it's a no-brainer to have two people there, because there's a trolling section, there's an adult sections, there are people on computers, there are people that use the restrooms, and we know that, I, you were on board when this was going on, but there were problems with the restrooms and what people were doing in there, and I think that having two people is just, just for logistics of that man in that building, or people in that building, so not using sexist language, um, is, uh, a no-brainer, I mean, I don't think, I think we need to think about the safety of, of our employees, as well as also the patrons that come in, and those people have things to do, I mean, I mean, the people that work there have other things to do, rather than always being at the circulation desk, so they can't take care of everything all at once if there was only one person there.
Alright, Benny?
So that, uh, safety is a big thing here, but.
So that, uh, safety is a big thing there. But it's not just because somebody might come and beat somebody up or shoot somebody. It's, what if someone has a heart attack? There's nobody in the library. What if somebody trips balls and hits their head, and there's nobody in the library? I've, I've worked for government agencies a lot in my life. And anytime my company that I worked for went on a job, you had to work in pairs, just because there could be an injury, and the person wasn't capable of getting help. So I think there's more to it than just somebody coming in and causing problems. There's more to it than just a complete safety. Our, our lady that's gonna have a baby, what if she went in the labor, and she was there by herself? That could get her. So I, I, I see what you're saying, absolutely. But I, I don't like to see anybody work by themselves, because there's that possibility that it can get hurt on her own, or by somebody else. If there's two people there, or one employee, you can get them home. If there's one person there, I mean, I'm able to, but I appreciate what you're saying. But, but Roxy?
I also appreciate what you're saying. It's good to look at everything in the budget. But I feel uncomfortable only having one person in the library. It's a big building, a lot going on. Look at the numbers. Look at the people that come in. Look at the, what's going on in the library. Expecting one person to be able to handle that, I think is asking too much. And I would feel personally uncomfortable if I thought I wasn't part of that, leaving someone by themselves in that position. Those are my thoughts.
All right, Ian?
I'm not against adding two people at all times. Heidi, I think if that was, that was, if we could do that, then that, then we should probably should do that. You know, one of the things we never did in the military was to split up. You know, you, you don't split, one, by yourself. You don't wanna find yourself by yourself, because it's bad, bad news. So I get it. However, again, I, I would just reiterate, I think, we're a small town. Can we really afford four librarians? I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't think so, personally. But that's, I think we have better use for this money in some other place.
I think at the most, you know, look at that trade-off for the forty thousand dollars for equipment. And as a secondary option, if you don't, because I go both ways with what you're saying. And I can go, yes, I wouldn't want anybody to get hurt, but you know, don't use me for an example. I work by myself all the time. Anyway, I'm so glad to see that you're worried about me. Anyway, so, but you know, there's just some things that you learn how to swing it, and you know you don't have any other options. I mean, you know what I mean? So for me, it's a little harder because of what I do for a living and how I trouble everything. So, I mean, I know how to hustle it if I have to. Sorry, but, you know. But at the same time, I honor and respect the class of others. But then again, so we have this forty thousand dollars for equipment. I'm just putting that out on the table too, as an option, especially for this year, because remember again, Heidi said, you better be careful this next year. I wanna be able to have things for sharing and continually. And I, 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 I like having, I do believe, and we're so completely believe the nest eggs, and I believe the city should have a nest egg also.
I might be wrong, but I believe selling the equipment isn't, not put it out as unsafe by inspection.
Yeah, it's not equipment. It's bookshelves and the children's section that has to be replaced because it is unsafe. Um, and then the other was the reception desk, which right now is just put together by, you know, best, essentially, doesn't have a good workspace. But I do firmly believe that we, and Gwen and I have already been doing some hustle to try to, I mean, this is an estimate. It's forty thousand, right? And so that is just the top number. We, obviously, all of the city of Sheridan are very conscientious of all the money. It is public money. We know that. And so we have already thought about different options to save money and get that price down, especially for the reception desk.
So if, if the shelves are ordered that are safe, we stop there, examine how much ones we have left over, we could possibly hold on to that and put that in contingency. I mean.
Well, it doesn't have to go into contingency necessarily, right? If it just doesn't get used, it just goes back up into the general fund at the end of the year. And I can't remember, how much are the children's workshops? What was it? Eighteen, eighteen.
Eighteen.
So, and then we just put a little extra in there, because you know, this is an estimate. Once again, you don't really know what's gonna pop up. We do have, the cubbies in there are really outdated. Some of them are kind of wobbly. So it's just over time, the furniture hasn't been replaced. And, you know, it kind of all hits you if you don't start taking care of this stuff at some place. We're essentially pushing this down the line.
We don't do the preventative maintenance. Okay, I don't, can't remember who was first here on this.
It was one more.
Okay, well, Jim, I. The, one of the options that wouldn't be popular, but based on what the library report in the library, well-used. However, if we wanted to not hire that fourth employee, you're restricting the hours that the library is open. We probably saw the issue, but that's another question. Do we want to do that, based on the public usage, which seems to be increasing, uh, monthly? That's just to throw out there. So, yeah. Yeah, I think Liz was next.
Well, I'd like to piggyback on what Jim just said. I saw a lot of flack online when the library was closed for a couple days, but I forgot what reasons, but people were very upset when it was closed. I don't think restricting hours is the solution. Um, I know, I, even when they, they close on Saturday afternoons to deliver books, people are upset about that, not having the library available. Is it, is it Saturday afternoons planned?
Yes.
Yeah, to deliver books. I've seen, I've seen this online, where a lot of people are chiming in, that they, why isn't it open Saturday afternoon? So I, I don't think restricting hours is the solution personally.
What are the hours right now?
Ask when. Ten to six.
Saturday.
Well, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
No, no Sunday.
No Sunday, sorry. I just kept going. They're closed Sundays and Mondays, because those are our least, yeah, least used days. We've done quite a bit of tracking with that and some surveys there.
But Saturday they close for deliveries, right?
Yes, because we have one person. So the goal with this is to leave the library open until Saturday evening to the fourth person. And so then essentially two are going in the car. We're definitely not sending one in the car to places. And, um, yeah, and then we can remain open as well at the library on Saturday afternoon. So that's the, the goal. Right now, the other person just stays in there and does a whole bunch of shelving. I mean, there's a ton of busy work that goes on at the library. Library's not given enough credit for how busy it really is, and how much work there is to do.
All right, Roxy?
Um, lastly for me, anyway, um, I think we've encouraged Gwen and the city manager to increase our library usage all along. And I'm thinking that this is what we probably need to expect, because watch what you ask for. You're gonna get it. Um, she's done a wonderful job, and I want to commend her on that. And this is part of what she's gonna need to continue what we're asking her to do.
Ian, were you, do you wanna go or Liz?
I didn't, I do not have anything to say.
Okay, Liz.
And what do we want for this community, you guys and girls? We want an educated community. The library is one of the best places for kids to go for activities and reading and, and being read to. And I think that, I don't think we should start changing the library, especially in hard economic times. That's one place people can go that doesn't cost anything, and they can get an education, they can have a good time, they can do activities. I think that if the library needs an extra hand, then we should be all for it and figure out a way to do it.
All right, Ian?
I, I think we should have, you know, the best library ever. And I love that. And I'm all for it. I don't think we should ever skim on anything that we're promising to provide, uh, ever. And, and so we should focus on the things, I think, that we're promising to provide. Uh, so, so don't get me wrong there. I love the libraries. I consider librarians to be wardens of knowledge. So, uh, I like the library. I think it's great. However, you know, I mean, the things we were talking about, this information is available. I mean, this is an incredible time of the living. And it's, and it's not necessarily good that we have access to, especially children, don't have gated access to this information. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue against libraries for sure. Um, but the, I don't know if I see it at this time, you know, budget, to increase our library, especially when it could be, need to be focusing on our parks, which are falling apart in our, our city, to attract more business, to provide more income, to provide better services. And we're trying to spend the money, but I don't think we have that money yet. Like, I think we should be spending this money to develop more money. You gotta have money to make, right now we don't have it.
Jim, I understand what you said, Heidi. Uh, with the general fund currently, the two hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred ninety dollars in the contingency fund, if something were to come up, we had a, a guy should come up in the middle of the street, or the sewer gets blocked, we could use the contingency money in the general fund to, uh, fix that?
Yeah, well, water fund. Well, yeah, those are dedicated to it, but you can always use general fund money for anything.
And then along with that.
As long as it's not restricted. I can't think off the top of my head anything that's really restrictive of the general fund, if I have to. I mean, this guy's grant money. You can't do that.
If, uh, if we were to.
And donations, we can't use that. Library fines, library donations, those are restricted to the library.
Jim, we're gonna add on the, yeah, um, can we just ballpark, because you're gonna run a bunch of numbers, give us an exact figure. Estimate a forty-five thousand dollar savings from not, not hiring a fourth employee. Set that estimate.
Do you wanna have a different conversation and circle back to me? I think.
See, well, that's what I'm, I'm gonna say, if that's, if my number's even close to right, if we have something go wrong in the sewer fund or the street fund, currently is not budgeted for any contingency, I'm thinking that that amount of money might not, uh, might not amount to much, so we still end up using the contingency from the general fund. So what I guess what I'm saying, Ian, is that I don't disagree with you, but I think the money is available through the contingency fund, and we're only talking about, I'm gonna say, less than fifty thousand dollars, if that appears to be right.
Well, it is for the direct wage, but then you have to add in, like, the benefits.
But, but we remember it is a part-time position we're talking about.
No, we've been talking about.
No, I, originally, if we're talking about dropping it to part-time, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So it's, because that's what originally the thought was, but if, if, so if it's full-time now, and we drop it to part-time.
You're not gonna add that much.
Yeah.
No. Savings between part-time and full-time is not fifty percent. It never has been. I don't think it will be. And I have never been an advocate too much of a part-time, because you lose, like, what happens on the day-to-day, and then you're always, like, filling back in that person, right?
Heidi, why isn't it fifty-fifty? Is it because of the benefits? Because once you hit over that fifty percent, then now you're eligible for benefits.
Yes.
So if you're saying maybe point four or something like that, then you wouldn't have benefits.
The benefits are eighty hours of the month. And so it doesn't, like, per week or anything like that.
Okay. Okay. Are there any more comments, or should we vote? People write or vote?
I just wanna let you know that when we're at the budget committee, and I know the parks and there were squeezing bucks, and first they, and I was for it and all, because I think the parks is a really big outreach, you know? And I really think that everything gets more expensive, and I really like what's going on at the South Side Park, and what's gonna happen along the riverfront. And, um, that they voted to cut eighty thousand, and then they raised it to a hundred thousand out of the parks. So I feel like that has given to the city. I think everybody has to make a squeeze. And they squeezed a hundred grand out of the parks, which I'm a really big advocate for the parks, because I believe children should be outside on nice days, especially when the cool river, it's not like you're out in the, you know, picking beans on the very coast. You know, I mean, they'll have, you know, it's not that.
That would be knows what you mean.
I, I, well, they're saying, I'm talking code, you get it. And, um, so, you know, I know that, uh, the things that we're trying to get done, you know, when I drive up and look at the little restrooms they're doing up there outside, and I'll see something going on down here, and the cool little, it's like the men who wrote the letter, with the breezes along the riverfront. Um, so it's a tough call, but, you know, I, I think that every category's gotta squeeze something from somewhere, and then everybody contributes together, you know? So I think a hundred thousand from the parks is a pretty good donation to give back to the city that, you know, and it was in a fair vote. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just wasting that now for the people that weren't there.
Okay, uh, Ian?
I agree, and I, I'm with you about the, that money. I was not necessarily, I think the, what, I believe that Roxy may actually made that motion to reserve that money. I believe I seconded it, actually.
That's okay, but you know.
But I, what I'm trying to say is that I, I like that we were reserving for potential use in the parks or some other contingency, uh, if that's correct.
I believe the intent was to go towards the law enforcement bill that we need to come out. But that will also go into the budget next year, because it went into contingency. But it's not budgeted specifically for law enforcement. But it was saved for the purpose of the budget next year, because we know ahead of time that it's gonna be tight.
Um, I mean, I, I would be, I would say that at very least, I would like to do the same with this position at the library. I often feel we should be committed to a full-time position. So that money that we're saving could be dedicated to that same.
Right, Ben, you got that.
All right. Liz, you have the last one.
Uh, okay. I just wanna make this comment. I love the parks too. You guys know that I'm a Parks fan. However, the parks can only be used, what, six months out of the year. The library can be used year-round for kids and families, because when it's raining and gray and cold, you can go to the library, and you can read, and you can do activities. I think we should reconsider what, 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 where this money would best serve families in this community. And I think that the library is one of the best things going in this community. That's all I wanna say.
All right, are we ready to vote now? Okay, all right, all in favor?
All in favor of the budget?
No, no.
Yeah.
This is for approving the budget?
Yeah.
I was like, it is.
Yeah, for resolution twenty twenty-four. Oh, correct. Yeah. All right, that's two in favor.
Are we voting already?
You can't vote.
You can vote.
I forgot, okay.
Okay, so, two, two in favor.
As presented.
As presented, two in favor. Okay, um, all opposed?
All opposed.
None, okay. So all abstaining?
We've, well, we've got Akef Hodgins, Matthew, and Hebert abstaining.
Yeah. All right, so passes. Okay.
Okay, we don't count X.
So this is two zeros.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm not voting that?
So, next is resolution twenty twenty-four dash R, I think.
No, M, I think.
No, we did M, and, and.
No, we're on R.
It is R, fantastic. I'm right, okay. A resolution demonstrating the city, sharing the city penalties, supporting the city's application to the Department of Land Conservation and Development's Transportation Growth Management, Grant Program to Update the Safe Transportation System Plan.
I make the motion that we move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash R, as presented.
I submit.
All right. Roxy, can I just clarify? You're, you're making the motion, right? You're not.
I made, what did I say?
You said you moved to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Close enough. Catch, first and second. Any, any discussion? Any, any discussion? I agree with you, now, Roxy. Um, okay, uh, no discussion on that, or, we wanna vote? Okay, all right, all in favor? All right, let's be honest, okay. Uh, vote. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash O four, in ordinance amending chapter five dot three-two of the Sheridan Municipal Code relating solicitors. Liz?
I move to in the group's ordinance twenty-eighty twenty-four dash O four.
As-
As presented.
Okay.
No, I moved to test this, oh, okay.
Nope, you were right.
Okay. So, second.
Uh, if they want, if they need to finish that, no, she, no, she quite titled only. No, I read it all, she, she just moved by the, okay, by the way that's saying, second. Okay, great, first and second. I don't think it's changed since, um, last meeting, any language, I think we're all happy with that.
Yep.
You asked it, you asked it for discussion?
There were a few- Yes, discussion, I have. Yeah, any discussion? Liz, Roxy?
This was a tough one. Um, by approving, uh, the resolution will put it on the ballot.
No, 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 nope.
This is solicitors.
This is the, page one sixty-three.
All right. I will be quiet.
Okay, so, first, second, uh, any other discussion on the solicitor, um, ordinance? All right, you wanna vote? All right, all in favor? Okay, let's be honest. Right, next?
Nope, wait. I'm here, getting way out of order.
Am I getting, yeah, fair, sorry.
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash four, in ordinance amending chapter five point three-two of the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to solicitors.
I make the motion we accept the reading?
Second. Okay, any discussion? Okay. Uh, Bob, you roll call.
Acap?
Yep.
Buffles?
Aye.
Mathroy?
Yes.
Hodgins?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Hebert?
Aye.
Uh, I make the motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four O four for the second time by title only.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All right. Voice, vote, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You raise your hand, you do, whatever.
It is, it is, yeah.
Normally don't vote by voice. Okay, that sounded, you have. Okay.
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero four, in ordinance amending chapter five point three-two of the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to solicitors.
I make the motion we accept the second reading?
Second. All right, first and second? Any discussion? Okay, this time do we vote, like, all or vote? Okay, we'll call, though.
Acap? And Buffles?
Aye.
Mathroy?
Yes.
Hodgins?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Hebert?
Aye.
Okay, move it out.
Okay, so that was, okay, all right. Um, okay, the next one, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash Q. Resolution referring to the electors, the question of whether to establish a ban on stateless and suicide product manufacturers and suicide incentives within the city's jurisdictional boundaries and for approval at next statewide general election on number five, twenty-four. Any questions or?
Now me?
Yeah, you can, go ahead and ask questions, or, Roxy?
Um, uh, first of all, um, this ordinance allows, puts, puts it on the ballot in November, hardest vote. And the way it's worded is that by approval of this measure, it would prohibit the establishment of psychocellulon product manufacturers and psychocellulon service centers within the city limits. Um, it's, I may not make a difference, but by wording it this way, a no vote means it would not prohibit, which would, would allow.
Correct.
That's correct, okay.
And a no vote-
Yes, vote.
If you have a vote, would prohibit.
Yeah, I believe so.
I, that's really important to understand the way that it's worded, is what I'm trying to say. Makes it harder to make a decision, maybe, if that's-
The way, reason it's, the reason it's worded that way is because it can happen, is that, is that right, so?
Either way.
Yeah, is if, yeah, if there's nothing, it will happen, but this is to pull to the voters, yeah. All right, I think Liz was first.
So, the, the question, on page one seventy-five, the question to the voters would be, shall the city of Sheridan prohibit psilocybin-related businesses?
Yeah.
So, that's pretty clear, yes or no?
If it's, as long as it's worded that way.
Well, that's, I think, don't they have, they, that, that is how they word it, right? I mean, it's, yes, in the ballot, yeah.
You mean like this?
If you look at one seventy-five, it says, here's the ballot title, which would be the title of the, you know, of the measure number, and then the question to the voters, which would be, would be the question you were considering voting on, it would be that question, which is pretty clear.
Okay, um, all right, Jim? I think it's very clear when you have the last line of the explanatory story. In the room, this measure would prohibit psilocybin-related businesses within the city of Sheridan. That's why I'm like, can't get any explanatory in that. In my opinion, so. Okay. Any other questions about?
Uh, yeah, I was in the ring for it, I had it first. Um, so, once again, Roxy, are you saying that a no vote is saying that we do approve of this going to the voters?
Oh.
Oh.
Um, no, a no vote would mean it doesn't go to the voters.
Okay, yeah.
I think, I think Roxy was talking about, had the language of how it's, you vote in November.
Oh, I see.
And when people vote, they look at all these things, and they go, no, I don't want, no, I don't want, no, I don't, no, I don't want that. But they don't realize by voting no, yes.
Actually saying yes.
Yeah.
They don't, and just a whole, yeah, so, it's just, you just have to read it and be quick, so you understand what you're actually voting for or against.
Indeed, I think maybe there can be some kind of, uh, explanation go out, maybe in the bulletin, uh, on this situation. I don't know, if the city can give the ball, they can put the flyer down, I, I, that, it could be, um, it could be, just to help explain it.
The city in general cannot have a stance.
Right.
But we can provide information.
Can I, if, if, am I, can I explain it?
And mayors that are involved are allowed to be political, because you are politicians.
Ooh, I don't see that.
I had to look at Jim.
Jim, um, okay, last round, I was just consulting with the city manager.
Well, you're a baller.
Yeah, I know, he's, uh, uh, and she just drove it right for me, I had any, kind of had to just went out.
I'm not a politician, Jim.
Yeah. All right, um, okay, um. All right, well, somebody wanna make a motion on this?
Is there?
Make the motion that we pass resolution twenty twenty-four Q.
First?
I'm second.
All right, first and second, any discussion? Ian?
Uh, I don't think that we should be providing this to the citizens as a ballot measure. If they want to have it as a ballot measure, they're quite able to do it, and they have the means to do it, and they can do it, and they, if they wanna do it, that's great. They, they should put it up and, or vote if they want to, I think they should.
That is legally incorrect. The city council has to refer it to the voters, or advance it to a place.
Or advance it to a place?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Liz?
And, did you read the document? Two years ago, this came up, and we decided, okay, so, that's why we had to make this decision to pass the reference. Yes.
My, I mean, my thoughts, I mean, my personal thoughts on it, it don't matter, but my, if you look at it, this was already voted on, so I just think we should let it vote on again, like, do you, do you want this? Because the person that said, no, we don't, so, let's ask them again, like, do you want it or not? This is my opinion, but, any other comments?
No, I don't think, I just, I don't think that we should be referring this to voters. This is not, this is a plant that we're talking about, I mean, we're not talking about a processed drug that goes through some sort of refining process with chemicals. This is plants, the, the, never in history has been, plants been a good idea, and I think it's absolutely beyond our responsibility and authority of government to handle this, so, I'm not for this.
Jim? Uh, in the wording of the fiasco that this got started with the psilocybin process, we're, you're talking mushrooms, I assume, it's a plant, right?
Yes, mushrooms.
Yeah. Because psilocybin is a result of, uh, the mushrooms, it's a drug that's, uh, processed through and under the law that they've set up, it's processed by one company and or person, and then the facilitator purchases that psilocybin, not mushrooms, psilocybin from that company, and then they, the facilitator, can give it to a customer, if you wanna put it that way. But the, the customer has to have two appointments before they even get to the one where they're given psilocybin. So, but it is, it is psilocybin, I don't believe it's, that's, I don't care, we're monkey splitting hairs.
And-
Uh, one second, Liz?
That's not even what the measure says, we're not saying whether you should legalize it or not, or make it available to people. What we're talk, what it's talking about is having establishments of manufacture within the city. So, that's what, that's what we're voting on, is approval of the measure would prohibit establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service centers within the serving city limits.
All right, Liz?
I think, though, it may be, to help clarify this, is that there's supervision, because Ian was, were you here, Jim? Anyway, there's a supervision thing going on with this product after, remember, because we were, hey, I know, you were here. I know you and Jim were here, we were all, um, and, um, that there is a supervision, there's rules and regulations that have to, this has to be a supervised experience versus bio-gummies, you know what I mean? It's kind of the same thing, except it's mushrooms and a biproduct, but I think that, from what I got from the information was that it's in a more supervised, kind of like a consultant type, please tell me, Roxy, I mean, you did, you didn't, you, you read that? So, I'm reading off your face, that, um, there would be some kind of supervision, and then when, when, you know, I'm just gonna talk real easy, when the buzz comes off, then you get to go home. You gotta stay inside, I thought it was kind of crazy myself, but, you know, I don't know, hey, I'm from the seventies, I'm just gonna go with this new thing. But it would be a supervised type of a deal, and honestly, I could have probably stood to watch the video that you sent to me. I always meant to watch it, but it was always too long for me, when I'm at work, to watch it, and I don't have a computer in my office. So, I could have stood and have some more information, but I didn't really think it was that. That's just me.
Um, well, a couple of things, um, the first is, is that goal number one, under our strategic plan, is to revitalize and recruit downtown businesses. So, this goes against our strategic plan, first of all. Uh, we also, this is, I agree that, okay, maybe it is, uh, psilocybin itself is extracted from mushroom. I'm not sure of the exact process, I'm presuming to know, however, right now, we can purchase THC-related products, cannabis products, that are synthesized or not, and I can actually accomplish those same things in my home, if I wanted to, the way the law is written. And I think the level of, of synthesizing that we're talking about here, to take it from a plant, mushroom, this, uh, this item to, uh, an isolated portion of it, like THC is for cannabis, I don't think we're talking about a, a really big deal here. This is not, we're not talking about a, uh, creating opium from cannabis. So, I, I guess, in that, that way, I, I, I'm feeling like this is specifically going against our plan of bringing in businesses. It's going against, uh, what I would consider to be just right and proper for the world in general with plants and government-related stuff. But I'd also like to say that this is a very important drug that is used for veterans in the treatment of PTSD, and it's, it's so important that the Veterans Affairs is considering adopting it, even though it's still considered, scheduled one drug under federal law. And these discussions are being had online and, and throughout the administration of the year. And I think that it's short-sighted in terms to, let me, wait, I should stop. It's short-sighted, it would be short-sighted of me.
Good job.
To, to, uh, participate in any way in stopping the furthering of this medicine and the research behind it and being used to help our veterans, uh, and people who are in need of this treatment. And, and there has been incredible results from these treatments, and a variety of actions, sometimes with a lot of psilocybin, sometimes with the daily usage of psilocybin, and this stuff is new, and it's, because it's been illegal for so long. And I personally won't be part of being in the way of it, I can't.
Can I just clarify, clarify one thing? I'm cutting in line, but, lots of people have talked about it, the law specifically prohibits manufacturing synthetic psilocybin. It has to be derived from mushrooms, so, I am lucky, and I don't know the exact extraction process, but I would equate it to marijuana. If we just started calling everything in a marijuana store a THC product, that is what psilocybin is here. It's not anything, it's not nothing that backed up.
Okay, uh, so, for everybody else, I'll just say again, um, to me, I think this is a, a bigger issue than what seven of us, seven of us, you said. The voters have already spoken on this once, I think they should speak on it again.
So, am I wrong in, but we're voting on here, I, at first, when I heard you talk, and I thought you were against the way you're known, that yes to me, or whatever you wanna call you, I was reading you just the opposite of what I was hearing you. I hope I could trade myself to just say, I don't have a problem, this is just asking that the voters vote on it.
Yep.
That's, so, that's what I don't have, I don't have a problem with that, I, I thought you did have a problem with that, but it sounds like you don't, so.
I don't have a problem with it.
Letting the voters vote to see if this is what, because we don't get to say yes or no, we just get to say, the voters get to vote on it, and let them make their own decision. We're not making a decision for them.
Well, as Tyler stated, the, the voters cannot create this ban on their own, and this is essentially us banning it, or, or providing the, the means by which to ban it, and I don't, personally will not be part of that, I cannot be part of it. Um, especially as a veteran.
Ian?
I think we need to figure, we need to figure out what we're voting on, okay? So, I think there needs to be a little clarification. So, what happened a couple of years ago, exactly, you want, a couple of years ago, the city of Sheridan, the city council, put out a vote to the public, to the voters, asking if they wanted to do a moratorium of two years, to say, wait, let's see, you know, where this goes, what happens, and what goes, or they had the, the opportunity to ban it. If the city council at that time did nothing, they were going to move into doing, uh, zone change or plenty.
Time place the manner restrictions.
Thank you very much, time place the manner restrictions on the industrial and on in the commercial. So, what happened was the, the city council decided to go forward with putting it onto the ballot. The voters chose to do the moratorium.
Yep.
What?
The city council referred a temporary moratorium to the voters.
Okay, okay, but they had the voters not approved the moratorium.
It would have been legal.
It would have been legal, right, and we would have moved into the time-placed manner restrictions. So, what you have before you is you have the decision of whether or not to place this, to refer it to the voters for a common and ban. If you do not choose to go forward with placing this on the ballot, you will move into a discussion of doing the regulation- you will move into a discussion of doing the regulations of time place and. Okay? Say that correctly. I just wanna make sure that everybody has an understanding of what you're being asked to do.
Liz, go ahead.
I just like to piggyback on that. We're not banning psilocybin, the usage of it, we're banning the manufacturing of it in town. And in the facilities. So both the commercial piece of it and the industrial piece. This is about, oh, the commercial as well, okay. All right, sorry, I think, uh, which is not recreational, by the way. It's with the facilitation.
Right, uh, Ian?
So, yeah, I mean, again, we're talking not allowing medicine that's drastically violating veterans to not have. It feels like, well, it is, at least in my opinion, it's, uh, it would seem to me like I was pushing, like I was asking the voters to ban it by putting this out there. And I am not gonna ask that. I will not.
I don't know, who's first, Roxy?
Let's reiterate, if this measure goes to the voters as we have it here, and it passes, it would prohibit the establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers and the service centers within the city limits. That's what we're voting on. And that's what we'd be putting in front of the voters.
I'm familiar with the, the good results that accompany this. And I understand it, uh, one thing that, uh, since we've been dealing with this for a while, a few years ago, the, uh, since Kit's here tonight, the county did not restrict it. So all you gotta do is go outside the city limits, go to Sheridan, and you can get this product. I think part of what this measure is, and you referred to this strategic plan, is, is this the kind of business people want within the city limits? That's gonna be something in their mind. Because originally, when this was brought up two years ago, people were, oh my God, they're gonna have people on the seats selling mushrooms. No, 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 that's not what this is at all. This is a medically induced product that's gonna be manufactured and facilitated. So, you know, that's, there's two questions here. Do they want that business in town? Uh, this is a very bad generalization, but I'll put it to you this way. What if in Sheridan, which is a, a good friendly town, somebody wants to put in a big old porn store? People are gonna be mad as hell and we can't really regulate that. This is something we can't regulate, and well, if people decide that they want that here. I mean, that's, it's a bad, you know, same process. Do you want this business in our town? Yes, we want new business, yes. Downtown looks like crap because we don't have the, uh, enough business to build the buildings that are down there. But is this the business you want to be there? That's how I look at this. Now, I'm familiar with the, the psilocybin success. I, you know, I'm not disagreeing with you at all on that, but it, it's the question that, I think that people have a right to decide versus us just not doing anything and letting it come in unregulated. Right? That's, that, that's the point. The county approved it, so it's not banning it for people who wanna use it nearby. I mean, there's facilities being built now and used, they're never gonna be used to be a good place. So it's, it's not, you know, you go seven miles up the road, or eight miles up the road, or whatever, uh, you can get the treatment. It's not a matter of taking the treatment away from anybody. It's just the treatment will be formed in the city of Sheridan. That's, that's all that I, I'm for the treatment, but I'm not so for that happening here.
So I'm just trying to make it, I'm just chopping it up some more, so make it digestible. Is that if this did, voting no, yes, that you could grow, manufacture here, that doesn't mean you're gonna have your consultation and your dosage here. It just means they're gonna manufacture it versus if they're not manufacturing it here, let's just say you can buy it in Mac and take it in Mac where the facilitation, where the people are, that it has to be supervised. If I remember right.
So, so you see, um, it would be approving the manufacturer and the service centers down at that last.
But does it say that it's separate? Well, that it's all in one?
It's above the explanatory statement.
Kinda have a hard time reading this thing anyway, so.
Yeah, so it says, uh, approval of the measure would prohibit the establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service centers. So you get both, you get both, both parts.
Okay. We've been corrected. We've been corrected.
Um, all right, Ian?
Well, since you mentioned Kit, I've mentioned him as well. And, uh.
Sorry.
Kit, along with our other county commissioners, saw fit, regardless of how you feel about it, uh, to make Amhull County a second amendment sanctuary, which arguably, there's a whole bunch of stuff around it. It doesn't really matter if it's like this. So I, I don't feel bad about, at all about standing up and saying, we're not gonna be part of this, or we are gonna be part of this, because we find it to be right or wrong, to, to be a part of it or not, to make a stand. So I don't, this, I don't think that we should even care what other people say or do around us if we're doing what's right for the veterans and the people who need this medicine in the community. And, and Dennis, the, or excuse me, Danny.
Yeah.
I, I, I get, I, I mean, we could probably figure something out, but, I mean, we have homeless veterans here. We have homeless veterans everywhere. And these are people that maybe don't have access to be able to go to these places. So do I want a manufacturing facility like in the Hyder Building? Not really, but who am I to say no to that? I mean, we're, this is, this is a town of, of people. And I think that we've committed to, that I've committed to, uh, following the constitution and for them to have freedom of, to, to, to use these items. And I don't think that, that I'm, I can participate in that.
All right, I'm gonna, go ahead and call and vote on it. I will say one last piece on that, though, that each city does have local control. Um, even though, as long as it's not breaking the constitution, we can make our own ordinances and resolutions, including this one. All right, so, all in favor? Two? All right, all opposed?
In favor of what? Can you finish the question, putting this on the ballot?
Yeah.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash Q.
Who is in favor of going forward and putting resolution, or putting this on the ballot?
So can we start again? Cause I was falling asleep.
All, all in favor?
Putting it on the ballot.
Yes.
Yes.
Putting it on the ballot, so we've got four. All right, all opposed? Okay. Two opposed, um, that passes. All right. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty four dash five.
That's our saving grace.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you.
An ordinance declaring a ban on psilocybin service centers and manufacture of psilocybin products, referring such ordinance to voters and putting it in the urgency. So how is this different than what?
How feels that different?
The resolution is saying, we're gonna send this to the ballot. This ordinance is what actually puts it on the ballot.
Okay, so we probably don't need to discuss this much. Do we have a motion?
And this, this would be going back to the script, uh, included on the twenty sixty three, except for placing.
One seventy.
You've got a script update, one seventy four.
Oh.
The bottom of one seventy three.
I just got from one sixty three, all right. I go back to the other way.
All right.
Um, the, the one that's Q, no.
The bottom of one seventy three.
Well, which is, which is ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero five.
Yes.
This is what actually put it on the ballot. Then I got it, okay. Liz, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, I move to introduce ordinance twenty four, twenty twenty four dash zero five, an ordinance declaring a ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products, referring such ordinance to the voters and declaring an emergency to be read by Tyler alone.
Okay, first.
Sorry.
Great, uh, Ian?
Before we vote on this, the vote that we are about to have is whether or not I have to read the entire ordinance or the title of the ordinance. It is not a vote in favor of or a vote against the ordinance itself. Change it by title.
Okay. So this is just to whether or not Tyler has to read it. Okay, all in favor?
You're not voting for it. Why read the whole thing? Okay.
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 You.
Sorry.
Okay.
You're voting in favor of reading it by time lonely?
No.
No.
He wants to read the entire.
Okay, that's all right, so put your hands up again if you're for that, the ordinance. So, okay, we got five, all again, all opposed?
All opposed?
Yeah, okay, all right, the other. So one opposed, so.
Before I read this, this is the first time I've gotten to do this.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero five, an ordinance declaring a ban on psilocybin service centers in the manufacture of psilocybin products and referring such ordinance to the voters and declaring an emergency. Whereas, in November twenty twenty, Oregon voters approved ballot measure one oh nine, known as the Oregon Psilocybin Service Act, codified as O R S four seven five A, which allows for the manufacture, delivery, and administration of psilocybin at licensed facilities. And whereas, O R S four seven five A point two three five provides that the Oregon Health Authority will regulate the manufacturing, transportation, delivery, sale, and purchase of psilocybin products and the provision of psilocybin services in the state. And whereas, the Oregon Health Authority has completed their rulemaking process to implement the state's psilocybin regulatory program and has begun accepting applications for psilocybin-related licenses. And whereas, in November of twenty twenty two, the city of Sheridan voters passed a two-year temporary ban on psilocybin-related businesses, which is set to expire at the end of twenty twenty four. And whereas, O R S four seven five A point seven one eight provides that a city council may adopt an ordinance to be referred to the electors of the city for prohibiting the establishment of state-licensed psilocybin product manufacturers and/or psilocybin service centers in the area subject to the jurisdiction of the city on a permanent basis. And whereas, the Sheridan City Council believes that referring the question of implementing a permanent ban of psilocybin-related businesses within the city is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the people of Sheridan. And whereas, the city council seeks to refer to the voters of Sheridan the question of whether to establish a permanent ban on state-licensed psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service centers within the city's jurisdictional boundaries. Now therefore, the city of Sheridan ordains as follows. Section one, prohibition. The establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers licensed under O R S two, two seven five A point two nine zero and psilocybin service centers licensed under O R S four seven five A point three zero five is prohibited in the city of Sheridan. Section two, refer. This ordinance is referred to the electors of the city of Sheridan for approval at the next statewide general election on November fifth, twenty twenty four. Section three, ballot title. The ballot title to appear on the ballot shall be prohibit psilocybin-related businesses within the city of Sheridan. Question, shall the city of Sheridan prohibit psilocybin-related businesses? That's a tongue twister. Summary, state law allows for the manufacturing, transportation, delivery, sale, and purchase of psilocybin, the psychedelic drug found in certain mushrooms. State law provides that a local government, government may adopt an ordinance to be referred to the voters to prohibit the establishment of licensed psilocybin product manufacturers and/or psilocybin service centers. The Sheridan City Council adopted an ordinance to refer to the voters that prohibits psilocybin-related businesses in Sheridan to enable the city to consider local regulations once the state's psilocybin regulatory program is established. Approval of the measure would prohibit the establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service centers within the city limits. Section four, explanatory statement. The explanatory statement shall consist of the following. Explanationary statement. Approval of this measure would prohibit the establishment and operation of psilocybin-related businesses within the city of Sheridan. A city council may adopt an ordinance prohibiting the establishment of psilocybin-related businesses within the city, but the council must refer the ordinance to the voters at a statewide general election. The Sheridan City Council has adopted an ordinance prohibiting the establishment of psilocybin-related businesses within the city of Sheridan, and as a result, has referred this measure to the voters. If approved, this measure would prohibit psilocybin-related businesses within the city of Sheridan. Section five. City manager and city recorder shall take all steps on behalf of the city as necessary to carry out the intent and purposes of this ordinance in compliance with state and local law, including but not limiting, limited to publishing the ballot title as provided by state law, publishing notice of the measure, and filing this measure with Amhull County Elections Division. Section six, emergency declared. This ordinance being necessary for the peace, health, and safety of the city, an emergency is hereby declared, and this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and adoption by the city council.
Give us a couple minutes, Danny?
Uh. He just figured he'd have to.
I guess I'd make a motion if we approved reading.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Yvonne, could you take a roll call?
Yes. Aka? No. Buckles?
Aye.
Matt Thoy?
Aye.
Keever?
Aye.
Houston?
I'm not a hundred percent sure what.
The no vote is not referring this ballot measure to the electors.
Hodges? Yes.
Forty two. First reading passes.
Gee.
Okay. I move, is it okay? I move to read ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero five for the second time by title only.
Second.
I don't think we need any discussion. All in favor of motion to read the ordinance by title only?
We're just reading, this is just by, we're not, we're not, we're not voting for it. You don't need it read a second time. That's what you're saying, yeah. You don't want it read a second?
I'm not voting, no.
You're not voting? So you're voting yes, okay. Okay.
So that passes, so I don't have to repeat it. I don't get to repeat that yet, dude.
I move to accept the second reading.
Wait, well, I haven't read it, Liz. Ordinance twenty forty four dash zero five, an ordinance declaring a ban on psilocybin service centers in the manufacture of psilocybin products and referring such ordinance to the voters and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I move to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero five.
Second. Cool, discussion. All right. Roll call vote.
Aka? No. Buckles?
Aye.
Matt Thoy?
Aye.
Keever?
Aye.
Houston? Hodges? Yes. Forty two.
Because it did not pass unanimously.
In unanimously.
Unanimously, we cannot hold the third reading at this meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you all. That was, we got through that better than I anticipated, to be honest.
Okay, so next unfinished business, does anybody wanna five-minute recess?
Yes.
No.
I had one.
People can step away if they need.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Liz. All right, so unfinished business, uh, not, does anybody have anything? Chad? Oh, Danny?
Are we gonna go over the branch tonight?
Yes.
I don't see it, that's a new business. Oh, there we go, okay.
Eighteen, one eighty-one.
Got it.
We've started crashing the money out, we're figuring out the, the, the.
This is, uh, are we on?
Well.
Research, now we're not?
No, we're not.
We are.
And we, we did add an item under, uh.
Yep, so new business, um, we added, um, a vote for the, um, union, uh, couple of, you know.
For fiscal year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five.
Did you say twenty four?
Yes, in the upcoming year.
I probably said three years, he's ripping, he's ripping it down.
That's different.
I make a motion that we approve the COLA of five percent?
No.
Nope. Six percent?
Right.
As presented for the contract for the union at this time.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
It's a part, it's not all union, I mean, starting.
starting July first.
Yeah, maybe all, I believe it's all employees.
But it's in, it's part of the union.
Yeah, the union. Cola is what is being approved, but all employees receive the cola of the union. Two percent.
I think somebody already did it. We can wait for Liz, right, vote? Vote? Hmm, vote? Okay, alright, all in favor? Alright, that's. Also unanimous, we can ask Liz. Okay, next up, uh, community grant. Yeah, uh, community grant application applicants. There is one.
Yeah, I tried to ratchet that money out.
Jim. I would just like to make the obvious statement. All of the request orders have presented a, a good case for their wanting the amount of money they requested. Uh, I made my selections, but I'm not gonna announce them right here, but, uh, it's gonna take a lot of discussion to figure out how we want to, uh, hand out this money, and against stating that we, uh, somebody's gonna end up with a high amount of money if we're gonna finish off the, uh, community grant balance.
Is there enough left in the balance? To award all this, you know?
No. So, all we have is two thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars, and, uh, if we requested, if we fill all of each, I think it's up to four thousand or something. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Or three thousand nine hundred, because they only have four hundred dollars for the boy scout.
Liz?
Uh, are we on discussion, or did someone make a motion?
There's no motion, there's no.
Okay. So I would like to award, um, all of the grant applicants in the amount of a hundred dollars less than what they applied for. Because, except friends of the, um, Parks and Rec, and the amount of two ninety-two, and that would allocate all of the remaining funds for the fourth quarter. So if everybody got a hundred dollars less, so if they asked for four or five hundred, they get four hundred, so it's, it's still got a big chunk of change. And then if Parks and Rec, and the only reason I'm singling them out for lesser amounts, because they've applied every quarter and they've received funds, but these other people have not, um, we would, we would use up all the funds, it would be, I did the math.
That's actually what I was over here doing.
Yeah, I did the math, it would be, um, anyway, it would come out to two hun- two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two.
Okay, Danny?
Okay, I'm. If we give it to seven, seven of the applicants, they'll all get four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, forty-two point nine cents. I'm not in favor of giving it to the friends of the park, we've already given about twelve thousand dollars for a handful of people. Uh, that's not benefiting the whole community. Given them a new place to put their stuff, we moved them there. Put new fins, water, uh, paid for their insurance before, they get a grant, we give them more, and we had to clean up the mess they left over here. They left a mess over here. I think the city's gone way overboard on this, and I have yet to see it benefit the city as a whole versus a lot of the projects that we have here in front of us, so that's my opinion.
Alright, Lucy?
So I really like Liz's idea, 'cause I was over here giving the money out, except that I would like to see, and you'd have to do your math, Liz, but you're my school teacher. I'd like to see the art conspiracy, because I think it's really important, if anybody listened to her, thinks she's got a revitalization, that we should be promoting her on our Facebook page or the city page, for what they do for the community, and they're not very well-known. And the other five hundred, I would like to see go to the revitalization, I go to those meetings, but they also showed the city of Sheridan what they can do by delivering uh, the art piece on the corner of Sheridan Road and South Bridge. And they're looking at doing another one, and kind of hooked into that particular, hopefully they'll continue to use the painter that did that one for future projects, and it's kind of funny, 'cause I mentioned art. Art, um, you know, what we're supposed to be doing, but I'm, it's kind of convoluted, because they are doing murals. And then, if you could subtract those two from those grants, I would agree with what you're saying.
Well, it would come out.
Just, sorry, that just, 'cause Liz already figured out the math on all of them, which is really nice of her.
Do you wanna add?
Yeah, well, if we didn't award the Parks, Friends of Parks and Rec, which I agree with Danny, they've, they've applied every quarter, and they've been awarded by, plus we put ten grand towards the fence in and all of that. If we took that out, we could, we could award, um, uh, my brain is fried, Sheridan, uh, they should look at more money, and the arts industry is three one hundred, yeah. There'd be two ninety-two, uh, within the.
Jim. Uh, yeah. I'm not gonna do the math, I'll let somebody else do that when they've done enough math, but, um, I'm, I am a supporter of the Friends of Sheridan Parks and Recreation, because, uh, my wife and Liz have two of the best, that's the new, uh, city partner, excuse me, the.
Community garden.
Thank you, uh, the community garden, and they're charging money for that. Hopefully, they have formed enough of a group of people like Liz and my wife going in and paying. They should be able to give their home money to pay for the insurance, versus coming us, coming to us every quarter, asking for more, I think we've done more than enough worth them.
Yes.
Okay, then I'll ask the question, if only somebody's doing the math, if we don't, if we award them the five hundred dollars, can we fund everybody else at a slightly lower rate?
Yes, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Ninety-two cents.
Forty-two nine cents. So they're all getting just a little under five hundred if we do not give the grants to Sheridan.
And then, uh, I'm sorry to repeat the hunch, she had ordered that the, uh, Eagle Step project is, uh, being requested for the, uh, bat. Lots of boxes, thank you. Uh, he's only asking for four hundred, so we've got another hundred dollar savings there, unless we wanna give him four hundred and twenty-seven, but, uh, you know, we can almost fund just about everybody to what they're requesting, with the exception of, uh, taking out the Friends of the Sheridan Parks and Recreation.
What was, what did you, what was the picture?
Four hundred twenty-seven forty.
So get the middle of the rest.
I'm sure, yeah, he, I noticed that, uh, the boy scout did not, he's not trying to fund the entire project, he's only requesting money for that, which is kind of a nice thing to see, but, uh, he's not looking to, for us to fund everything, he just wants to.
Why is it doing that, they're falling over there?
Yeah.
Right, any other, oh, Ian?
Uh, based on what I've heard, Danny, um, about the Parks and Rec, they've had some pleasant, uh, especially what we may give to them.
It's the community garden.
But I, I really think that we should prioritize, uh, food and children, and I think that, I don't know if we should give them the money this time, maybe we should, uh, but I, I, I like all of these, but I, I don't see that us having enough money to approve all of them, so, even a lower amount, I think I would be rather give. Like, uh, just like we were talking about before, where I said we are approving a certain amount of money to certain nonprofits or certain organizations, that it's us approving of their behavior. So, I guess I like what you said about that. But I also, I don't think that promoting that, that we had a priority for me, to award the community great resources.
Uh, who's, it was for generally, Liz, I guess.
Okay, I was, um, the reason I wanted to award, the reason I proposed we award all of them monies except Friends of the, uh, Parks and Rec, not that I don't love what they do, it's just that they, we've awarded a lot of money to them, um, because these are all new, all, all of these people are, this is the first time they've applied for this grant, and I think they all are worthy of receiving it, especially because they're first time applied, and I think, as Danny worked out the math, if they all get a little over four hundred, that's great, that helps them, it's close to what they're asking for.
Just to clarify, this is the first time, at least this year, I know Walker Travis has gone over it before, but I don't think it's been this year.
Yeah, this year, this cycle, though, you're right, first time this cycle for, for the, yeah.
It looks like our conspiracy has three, order three.
Was it order three?
Oh, they were. Oh, okay, alright. Sorry, wow, I missed that one, I was looking through it.
Pigeon, uh, this is, uh, kind of to help you on a little bit, Ian. The, uh, Friends of the Sheridan Parks and Recreation, uh, community garden, it's not quite what you might think, the community garden is for people to come and grow their own vegetables, and what they do with them is not directed, but they're really grown for themselves, and so give them.
Uh, sorry, I didn't mean to.
It sounded like you were thinking, oh, they'd be good, because they give you money in the food bank, you know, or food in the food bank, that's not necessarily true, they could if they would like, but that's not their destiny.
Right. My wife has donated twelve thousand dollars to the plants to the food bank, and she's pretty active in the garden community around Sheridan. Uh, and she was strangling me if I said that we weren't gonna support, that I wasn't gonna support this. Uh, but I do think that Danny has a good point, I, I don't know where I sit on it, honestly, I didn't feel like I wanna go, I wanna promote good behavior, but I also want people to have a spot to grow through. So I think we should, uh, you know, think about that, or, I don't know.
Danny?
I, I agree with you, but I'm talking, there's a handful of people that got around twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And we've given these smaller groups that do things for the whole community, just like, uh,
Garden revitalization.
Yeah, the Rotary, and, uh, hometown days, that's for the whole community, and we haven't given them anywhere near that kind of money. And the whole community benefits from that, the garden, there's a handful of people, and they can't grow enough food to even help the food bank, food bank can really, they can buy a truckload.
I'm not concerned about providing food for the big bank, I was thinking just for themselves, but I, I think I agree with.
Yeah.
I agree, we have other sources that deserve it, just, uh, like, etc.
Yes, anybody have any, uh, proposal for funding it up?
Yeah, uh, am I correct, with Danny's figures, that if we fund everyone except the Friends of the Street and Sheridan Parks and Recreation, that they would get four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty percent? I'd make that motion, that we, uh, award everyone except the Friends of the Sheridan Parks and Recreation, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty percent.
I second it.
Alright, first and second, any other discussion? Okay, alright, let's go. Uh, all in favor? Okay, uh, Lucy, did you?
I can.
Ian, okay, I did say it, sorry.
Did you?
Okay, uh, all opposed? Okay. So, uh, Ian was, uh, he opposed, so that passes, okay.
So four hundred, please say it.
Four hundred twenty-seven.
Four hundred twenty-seven, twenty-nine cents.
Forty-two cents.
Forty-two point nine.
Oh.
I think he probably gets closer, four-two-seven, forty-two cents.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna do point oh.
If I mess up all the coins here, okay.
Yes, we'll just keep that point oh oh nine cent for ourselves.
I'm sure we can just do forty-four.
Okay.
Remember the penny.
Um, Heidi, I believe it's, uh, time for your report.
Okay, I'm pretty sure we're gonna write these checks for four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. Okay, that's part of my report. The next item here is, first off, Kale did a great job today, everybody should know that, we, uh, Kale and I went to representative's, Andrea Salinas had a meeting, an open house with, with mayors and city managers at the city of Independence, and, um, we gave them a piece of what's needed in Sheridan. Kale went first, and then we let a couple other cities go in front, and then I sent a piece as well, so, and then we participated in the roundtable afterwards, and we found out a lot of information, um, from the, from FEMA and the Oregon Emergency Management, um, Department, and about their grants, and one of the things I was really pleased to learn is that they will send somebody, they, the Oregon Emergency Management and FEMA, can send a representative out to meet with developers, to talk more about the requirements of flood and flooding, and what those look like, and so I'm really eager to hold up kind of an open house for people to help discuss the, the issues that have been raised so many times, and the obstacles that developers see for them. Um, we also, you know, really spoke about the need for a stormy mountain, and, uh, about Sheridan Melvin's law. Um, okay, so, I would like to reiterate, I think it was the mayor that said this earlier, the need for people to remember to call YCOM and call nine-one-one if there is an emergency, or you need to make a police report, if a crime is in action, and you need to call nine-one-one, but just do, make a police report as well to YCOM. That is something that I've asked my staff, uh, to help carry the messaging about. Uh, the phone number for YCOM is five zero three four three four six five. I would like to announce to everyone that the high school FFA donated all their leftover plants that they grow at the greenhouses to, uh, be planted in the plaza, and volunteer, volunteer Kay Buckles, she planted them for everyone to have them there. The mercantile gave a good discount for the soil for the wisdom girls, so that's how that project got done, and it looks great. Uh, we do still need a planning commissioner, we can, we keep advertising, but we really, really do need to all put in the effort to ask somebody. The planning commission is really gonna feel turning up a heat because of the code amendments that Tyler has discussed, those are all gonna go before them. At the next, uh, meeting, um, Monday, the second Monday of the month, um, they will be hearing, um, a presentation from Liam about all the different amendments, yes.
Uh, so, the, in order to be on the planning commission, is it anyone, or do they have to own a business?
It can be anybody who's lived in Sheridan, or mayor, captain, or mayor. Just revise this, and, or, I mean, or, they can own a business, or be a general manager of the business. So those are a bunch of ors there.
Does that have to be in the city limits?
The business?
Yes, no, the person.
Unless they are an owner or a general manager.
Of a business in town.
Business in Sheridan.
Yeah, in the, in the.
They have to have some sort of tie to Sheridan.
Oh, you said they had to live in Sheridan, that's similar.
Yeah, a business. Yeah, they can either live in Sheridan or have a business in Sheridan.
Well, some people live in Sheridan, but they're outside the city limits.
Which is not living in Sheridan.
In the city of Sheridan.
Yeah, the city of Sheridan.
Not living in the city.
I do consider it the same.
Okay, can you say that?
Okay, so, I think you have my, you have my report on pages one ninety-nine through two oh three, I close out the packet here, two oh four.
Uh, Jen?
Would ask now for, watch, I, I've gone through your, uh, report, and I just have, uh, one question and a couple of comments. Uh, the question I have is on page two hundred, talking about, uh, adding a park post position to the city council after July council meeting. What is a park post position?
A park post position is an unpaid position, it is somebody's, if you've been to a campground.
Several.
I wondered, because when you sit with your name, I was like, has Jen been to a campground? Okay, so is that like at a campground, and it's a person that's, um, that is vetted, of course, and they are offered in exchange for mini park activities, they can stay there for free, so they have to have their own camper or RV, whatever, um, and then they get utilities and, um, water, sewer, yes, sorry, internet. Uh, they would not have internet at this location, I believe, no, but they would have electricity, and so it'd be at the south side park, because we're putting in a lot of amenities down there, and we really wanna be sure that we're protecting them, so the person would have the responsibilities of, um, you know, keeping out the riffraff that could happen, locking up the gate, opening the gate, um, and, let's see, setting up for events, uh, mowing, making sure the trash doesn't overflow, those kinds of basic things.
Can I ask, in the, uh, when your sentence reads that you're going to close, adding a park post position, great, I know what that is now, to the city council. So they're gonna come in here every month and they sit and comment? So they're gonna come in here every month and they sit and comment or whatever, I mean, that's, that's, she's gonna be referring the proposal to us.
Ah, okay.
Because, yeah, I'm going to propose adding a park post position to, you know, to the city council.
Okay, that'd be the comment or something, I wouldn't have, wouldn't have gone, but anyway. Uh, town hall's gonna be discussed at the meeting, uh, two weeks from now, three weeks from now, July eleventh, July eleventh, okay? Uh, I'd like to thank Angela once again for the, uh, totally unfortunate, uh, project, but also getting the, uh, state new, uh, chip, uh, clinic available to everyone, trying to get, uh, feral cats or anybody else's cats under control, so you don't have a sequel to cats. And then I'd like to know what, um, sort of support letter, uh, you're looking for with the transma- transportation system, grant plan, grant application, do with my own self-writing a support letter, be what you're looking for? Are you looking for something from the council, I mean, that's?
Yeah, I can draft something up for you. There was one that's very general, that's in somewhere in this packet, um.
It could just be like one letter, and then we all sign it.
Exactly, so I can draft that up, or somebody on council can take the initiative and tell me they're gonna draft it.
Check.
Draft a letter in support of the transportation growth management.
If you give me the general one, I will.
Okay. And then specifically, the city's gonna be applying for a transportation system plan, um, I don't know, say, update, and that is part of the pool, so I guess Liz and I can work on that.
Yeah.
So, what do you, he's gonna help too? Oh, okay, okay, and then, uh, yeah, so.
Then you know, so we, well, I was gonna, I don't know, I don't think it's in here, or maybe it is, I don't remember, um, about the, um, downtown, um, planning grant thing, um, for, for CDBG grant, um, I believe. Probably need to be at a July meeting, uh, where we'll have a hearing in order. That's the first step of getting a CDBG grant for a downtown plan, is we will have a hearing, um, for it, and then the next meeting will prove minutes, and then that goes toward our application for the plan. Uh, but, um, I believe it's a fifty thousand dollar grant for, for completed downtown plan.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, and we will hold a town hall in mid-August is the goal.
Probably.
And then we will use all of that information and summarize it too for our downtown, um, revitalization planning grant that we apply for.
It'll be an interesting town hall, because there'll be a lot of other things going on, so.
Yes.
But that's gonna be one of them.
Yes, and we will have a leadership meeting for designing the town hall, um, the town hall on.
The meeting before the meeting of the town hall. Yeah, so the meeting to plan for the town hall is July eleventh at six, and anybody, any councilor's.
What, here?
Yeah. Yeah, July eleventh at six.
Is it on the calendar?
It is.
Okay, there, here.
Okay.
Ian?
Can we hear Mark sometime, maybe through an email, uh, about what Angela's ideas are? I'm interested in those.
Do I specifically say Angela's?
Uh, you say, I continue to support Angela and her ideas for, that's the reoccurring COVID issues. I'm just interested in what those are.
Yeah, I guess those come out in the Friday journal. Yeah, but like this is one.
Yeah, okay.
Cause we can be heard upon the ask.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, it's hard to sometimes find the idea, I kinda have ideas.
Okay.
I have one question.
Okay.
What is the community green infrastructure grant program? Congratulations that you're on that committee, but what is that?
So it'll last just a couple of months, but essentially the state, um, came up with that there needs to be this, I don't know, what is it? Community green infrastructure grant, and they gave a whole bunch, a bunch of money toward the creation of this grant. And so they wanted to hear before they actually start, you know, having a grant application. The group that is responsible, which is the DLCD for the grant, wanted to hear from agencies about obstacles or that they, you know, they have drafted some stuff, and wanted to hear obstacles, challenges that we saw, um, just some feedback from different organizations. I had my first one this morning, and it was very fascinating to hear the different perspectives coming together. Um, one of the things that I spoke about was the hardships that we face with floods, um, and the wetlands, and, um, just like the reuse of sewer and limitations around water. And, um, one of the things that I learned was a good livable community, when you look out any window, you should see three trees. We do that.
So we be eligible to apply for the grant?
Well, you're on the committee?
Yes.
Oh, good.
People that are, people that are committee members are not committee reviewers on purpose, because they want us to advocate and to also consider applying.
Okay, good.
Yes, and so one of the things we also did today was talking about, um, having a piece of it be just for micro grants, and they're really excited for school districts to get involved with some of that, to, to planting like native, you know, pollinator, I can't believe this, native pollinator plants, basically, into how it schools.
Probably go ashtray to it.
No.
But maybe doing education around that, hopefully get education on it.
Oh, thank you. We're all getting tired, I don't want to go back.
Great, um, anything else, any other questions, right? Okay. Okay, alright, second comment period. Um, I already read the rules, first time, uh, Joe, you wanna come up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, uh, Joe Haley, West Seattle Conspiracy, um, President Sheridan, um, I'm gonna quick, um, cause I wanna hold them too. So, this is a perfect segue into what I'm gonna be talking about, the poll that, um, I conducted, that some of you are aware of, uh, because in the last meeting, it was discussed about timing, uh, adjustment. So, I did on Facebook and shared with five different pages, I did five to seven slot, five thirty to seven thirty, six to eight, basically tried segments all the way to eight to ten PM, got the, please, no. Um, so, over fifty percent voted six to eight PM, and that's just fifty-one votes. Uh, eleven percent, six votes would be five to seven PM, five votes, which is nine percent of it, five thirty to seven thirty, and then you have eleven percent, which is six votes, which was six thirty to eight thirty, four votes, which is seven percent, uh, seven PM to nine PM, and, uh, seven thirty to nine thirty was one vote and one percent, and then zero percent, thank goodness, for eight, ten PM, because I don't, I'm looking at that right now with everyone else. Um, one person voted saying they think couldn't able to show, and two votes said they will not attend outright. They have no interest in coming to a meeting, just two people. But that was just fifty-one votes compared to the three hundred that was, that I did one time, so. It may be two, not enough people that voted, obviously to get an idea, but so far, I think six to eight might get there.
Thank you.
Question, Bill?
Yes.
Yeah, any idea why somebody that doesn't wanna be here would still take, respond to your poll?
That is something I was curious about, um, I wanted to basically get a feel of what people think and, and try and segue that into a good poll, but I think they want to be heard, but they didn't wanna be here. Yeah, I don't know, or maybe, oh, I didn't mention Zoom as a possibility on there, it said timing of interest of being here, or cities partake in the, uh, the public meetings, so. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Um. Where should you go? I think we're just here for council comments. Um, I can go first, um, I think what I did, um, is a couple weeks ago, I was a grant application scorer for Yankton County. Um, I was interested, interesting, there was like eight businesses, um, I don't think they've announced winners of that yet, um, but it was like through Yankton County, I believe it was their economic developer that sent that out. And then, uh, I was looking at some of our industrial plans, um, cause I'm.
Oh, I'm.
No, it's okay, um, so, I looked at some of the industrial lands because we're gonna be, you know, Sanctuary's giving us a proposal, and I'd like to kinda go out there and, and look and see what was there. Um, and it's, it's interesting, I don't know if anybody else got a chance to go look, I know me and Ian went and took a look. Um, it's odd, it's just like, it, it, it doesn't seem like it's part of the city to me, just cause it seemed like it's just like a different section, and it really is, but it's just, I don't know. Um, but I'm, I think Sedcor could help us get that, you know?
Yeah, that's built on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they can help us with this, I mean, and, you know, if we don't, if you don't use them, then I, I would just, I'd say. And it would be great if we could actually get it, you know, developed, um. And then I can't remember the last time we met, I know I met with, with John and TK about, um, business improvement plan, but really what, what that meeting turned into is, um, you know, town hall. Um, but I think I might help with business improvement, because we talked about asking people what they would like to see in Sheridan, um, as, as part of businesses go, and what they think we need, um, and what, or what we have. Um, and then, yeah, the event today, um, uh, Congress, Congresswoman Salinas asked if anybody, you know, wanted to, you know, raise their hand, so I raised my hand first, um, and just told her about, um, Stone Mountain, and that, you know, we've got the reservoir, it's not connected, we've had two, you know, incidences in the river, um, and, you know, it could be, you know, a great, you know, asset for, you know, businesses too, because we're gonna have too much water that's connected. And then it was nice, because she asked, she's like, okay, so, who, who would help, you know, Kale, basically, where would, where would he go? And there was, you know, EPA, USDA, FEMA, um, there's several federal agencies there, not just state. And they were, they were, you know, saying, really, you know, talk to us about this, or we can help with this, or maybe that. Uh, but I think we got a lot of good researches from the Oregon, um, Emergency Management, the person we talked to. He actually came up, he, um, and started talking to me about what we could do. Uh, so that was, that was helpful, um, a lot of, a lot of stuff, I guess, in, in progress, um, that, you know, will probably take some time. And then I got a letter, um, today, I think, you know, I think Lucy Denny saw it, I'm not sure if Liz and Roxie saw it, Jim, you may have seen it, it's the one going around here. Yeah, um, I'm not sure if Ian's seen it yet, um, but somebody suggested, um, basically doing a, uh, flea market on, um, Maine, it's like from the, going toward, you know, Wilmaina, um, on that sidewalk, um, sidewalk site. He says a measurement on there.
On the river side?
Yeah, yeah, basically having just a, a line of, you know, vendors along the sidewalk, and people can just walk along the sidewalk next to the river, and then all these little stations, um, and I thought that was a good idea, um, he, he offered to run it and set it up, which is, I don't have to, so, um, but I did say, I thought, I, I told, I told John that Lucy might be interested in that, so I can go call it to you without asking, I'm sorry. Uh, but if that is something you're interested in, um, you know, I can get you his contact, and you guys can.
He says John, he's talking about John Stanislawa, Sheridan?
No.
No?
No, John from the letter, sorry.
Thornhill.
We went with, we went with John Stanislawa.
Oh, it's wrong, okay. How did I say John, okay, yeah, no, earlier, yeah, John Stanislawa, Sheridan, the favorite, and then TK, um, violation.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, if you guys, the, the individual who wrote me the letter was wrong, not John. Sorry about that, um, basically, but it sounds like, um, it sounds like they might know who you are, so.
No, no, I don't believe it, I, I'm familiar with them. When you were doing the thing with the industrial sites, did you, have you checked the floodplain map from industrial? And, because, you know, in some, in a lot of cases, it's really hard for industrial sites to build in a floodplain, and all of our industrial sites are almost all on a floodplain.
I don't, this isn't, it only looks like it's right here. Everything else is out.
Is that what it is, because it's, I thought down by Richard Street.
Um.
I'm in.
You are?
Are you in the floodplain?
Yeah, she, yeah, Roxie is right here, yeah, it's up in here, but this is residential, actually. This is residential. But then, everything to, what, the west of Richard? Between Richmond Orchard isn't, Orchard, it's got some, but then, the middle there, and then Chiff Yard, and then Rock Creek is not. So all this is not.
Which is. Isn't that linked up here to being farm, technically called wetlands, is that correct? The, two, there's a few areas out here.
And it, oh, the wheat, yeah, the city owns, yeah, that is a good question, I would assume so, because I think you talked about having the, um, those things called, um, soaked in water. No, the, um, island, I think so, is it? To, no, keep the land. Up in wetlands, they put it down to help, yeah, drain the water, right, yeah.
Oh, tile, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that's just the flood map, so the wetland map might be different, but at least the flood plain is, is a little bit.
All of this stuff is on the city's website, what we have down at the bottom, there's a nice map, and you can just click the layers.
Yeah. But, and I just thought that was another thing we can, or I can try and work on it, that's.
And I think that's what Liam showed me a map, and it was like, it was all brown, and he goes out to wetlands. And that's really almost all of Sheridan, it's just that wetlands became popular in nineteen ninety-six, but after they got done with Spotted Owl. And they went from the Spotted Owl to the wetlands, because I practiced DSL, and they said that it's, I think in nineteen ninety-six, which is why we never really heard about it before, and now it's the thing that they just kinda mail in.
Well, and, and this'll tell us, I mean, I mean, obviously, yeah, we can take a look at the map, and look at wetlands, but Sedcor will be able to tell us, like, you know, ways to mitigate it.
That's on the eleven?
No.
Yeah, but that will be July ninth, I hope.
That's what your work session is.
Yeah, yeah, I was hoping that invited for the work session, I need to, I, I talked, I talked with someone from Sedcor, they go double check and make sure Abashaw. She's our, she's our, our rep. I don't know, I probably did something else, I can't remember it, anyone else wanna share their comments?
Um, I would like to speak on the half of the riverfront, a group that will meet on Thursday at three. They were talking to the city of Sheridan, I'm looking at it, um, over there, down by the, um, Rock Creek Road, where the city has a place to be able to put in wraps. We were talking about waiting for the weather to get better so that they could mow it, so that maybe we could get some kind of activity on our river for the people who live here, to be able to put their wraps in. At least at Rock Creek, it'll be about an hour to forty-five minutes drift from that point, it'd be perfect for families with little kids.
So I know that a lot of people think that I'm like a hater in the city, but we do have to remember that is not, that is not a, uh, insurance for apartment. So that will be a change. So we have to, I have quite a bit of work to do for that.
Just to, just to mow down to the river?
Well, just to change how it's used, because there is, Tyler, a minute, what is it called? Park and Recreation.
Recreation.
Yes, and we don't have, like, any rules for that place, we don't have it as a park.
But if it was mowed and then, that's all.
There's a, there's quite a bit of work.
That's worse than doing nothing, probably. Oh, okay.
Yes. So there is a whole process behind this.
That's kind of too bad, because, you know, people in Sheridan, where you gonna put your boat in? It's not like you could do when you were a kid, you'd just pull over, versus somebody just going there and dragging it up to the fresh, I guess.
Saying that it is not, and the, the city is not set up for that at this time.
Okay, alright.
Um, just to piggyback on that, I mean, it's, it's a big deal to create a park, and, and to, uh, create a purpose, it's gotta be in the park system, it's gotta be, I mean, it's not just like mowing a piece of public property and letting everybody use it. It's, it's a process to go through, to be part of the system, to be part of the city that is taken care of. I mean, there's maintenance, even if all we do is mow it once, then we're gonna mow it three times, five times? You know, there's all kinds of other things to think about when we create a new park.
Well, I'm only saying that because we already went down there and looked at it.
Yeah, I'm, but I'm saying.
There's a real nice entryway for families to be able to bring their boats down there, go into the river.
And might be something to think about in the future, part of that.
Yeah, I think we could gather a list of all the things that we have to check in that process. Probably have.
Oh, I thought it was.
Alright, uh, I think you were implying, Heidi, that insurance rates would go up if you did make that a park?
Oh, yeah, I'm nervous about the entry, piece of it. I have to investigate, like, PDA issues, I mean, like, the list is like. I have to investigate it, for like PDA issues, and like the list, it's like, this is expensive, and this is where people, that's always done.
That's what happens when politicians get involved, sorry.
And we had to just get that in.
Okay, uh, Ian.
I'm just unsure how to say what I'd like to say. I would say, I'll make it quick, which is, um, for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five. I do personally find section six to be, uh, misleading in the way that I understand this information. And I don't, uh, like the, the way it's worded. And, and I don't think that this was an, you know, in my personal opinion, so.
Can you read, can you read that out, I don't?
What page are you on?
Sure, that's page one seventy-nine of the package. One sixty. Section six.
We already packed those off, love.
Do you want me to read?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
In section six, uh, the law reads, emergency declared. This ordinance being necessary for the peace, health, and safety of the city. An emergency is hereby declared. This ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and adoption by the city.
No, it wasn't that done, because we didn't have time to forward the cutoff earlier.
That's your primary decision.
We would not be able to forward an ordinance to the voters if we had to read it at two city council meetings. And then wait thirty days for it to be effective, we would have the, okay.
It's a kind of thing, you should, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the reason why it's, because without that, we wouldn't have been able to meet the deadlines of the one ballot, correct? Okay. Jim?
Oh.
Just so that I understand, if, uh, if this, the ballot, in order for that ordinance. Could we come back in May, or is that it? It's a one, one and, one and done, or?
Correct. Okay, anything else? Alright, um, well, how will we adjourn?
That's not good.
We are adjourned, it is nine to eight.
Oh, you can't.
Yeah.
I knew it was gonna get on, watch.
Oh, that's right, yes.
Yeah, that way.
Ian, did you get a chance to read that letter?
I did.
Yeah.
So you have a very compelling argument about cell segment, and I agree with you a hundred percent. Recording stop, so I can, I think, what you might have to see, what I'm looking, the way I'm looking is, let's put this to the voters. Let, let them decide whether we should have, or we're gonna ask. And we have to do something, because we don't.
I heard that.
No, we have to, we have to, two years ago, I quit my moratorium, or this was our date. So if something has to be done. Well, we had to write a list of the months.
Yeah, they said at some time. Did nothing. Put a key to your moratorium on it, or it's.
I worked my way through it.
So I made this suggestion, predator blamers, that we like, that we go for two years.
Then let's see what happens.
And then I had hoped that we could, you know, do another two years.
More and more information.
That's not a choice, it's, yes, or no.
Well, come on, I'm just, just like a child.
I think we should care on the side of freedom, especially when it comes to, you know, break through medicine. Sure. By veteran school.
Do we have a member of the Oregon's? We have a president right here.
This town.
We have to do a revolution, the green streets, green locks. It was mad, uh, that we have now, or power.
Why is it said, it may not pass, it had done a pass, isn't it?
We've essentially created the most, uh.
Well, you know, it's that thing.
State board, so, yes, so council.
I mean, this is a real, uh.